It is now 7:00 PM and I'm reconvening to open session and calling to order the Regular Board of Education. Hello, everyone. For Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, December 6, 2021. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Mr. Carubus.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Present.
Ms. Fosdick.
We have a quorum. Ms. Demming, will you lead us in the pledge to allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, we have a levy hearing that needs to take place at 7:05, which gives us three minutes to read. I guess we'll read some of the board salutes and then we'll continue with them after the hearing. So, Ms. Grover.
Matia students receive recognition from the National Scholastic Press Association. The board salutes Matia graduate Leland Pan who recently earned fifth place for her article, "Navigating the Media Terrain in the 21st Century," from the National Scholastic Press Association. Leland was the online editor-in-chief for Matias Stampede News Magazine. She's currently studying pre-law at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Autumn Zayas, Profilika Balaji-Vishnavi, and Christina Gokel earned an honorable mention for Photo Gallery of the Year for their coverage of the 2021 commencement ceremony. This places their gallery in the top 10 in the country. Congratulations to all on these outstanding accomplishments.
Niqua Valley tennis coach named Coach of the Year. The board salutes Coach William Rose from Niqua Valley High School for being named Illinois High School Tennis Coaches Association 2021 Regional Boys Coach of the Year. Coach Rose will be recognized at the IHSTCA Winter Workshop in February 2022. Congratulations, Coach Rose.
Ms. Demming.
Niqua Valley graduate assist in design of mobile application. The board salutes Niqua Valley graduate Cade Nyland, who was instrumental in the development and piloting of a mental health application for anxiety management. Cade is a senior arts technology student at Milliken University. As a research fellow, he spent last summer co-designing the interactive mobile mental wellness application with Jessica Wilcoxen, Associate Professor of Arts Technology and Administration; Dr. Yuri Quintana, Division Chief of Clinical Informatics at Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center; and Assistant Professor of Medicine at Harvard Medical School, as well as members from the Homewood Research Institute. Congratulations, Cade, on this great achievement.
Matia Valley volleyball coach named Coach of the Year. The board salutes Coach Dave McDonald from Matia Valley High School, who earned the 2021 Illinois Volleyball Association State Coach of the Year Award. As head girls volleyball coach, Dave recently led the program to its first-ever team-state championship in school history. Congratulations, Coach McDonald.
Okay, it is now 7:05 and we will proceed with our levy hearing. We'll do it after. Mr. Shipley.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, we are taking the actions that will result in the extension of our property tax levy. The Illinois School Code gives the authority to boards of education to levy a tax on real property within the district to support public schools. Property taxes are the most significant funding source for our district, representing approximately 77% of the total revenue received by Indian Prairie. This is an annual process that must take place by the end of December. The truth in taxation law provides that if a tentative levy exceeds 105% of the previous year's extension, a public notice and hearing are needed before the official levy can be adopted. Since our levy request represents less than a 5% increase, we are not subject to the truth in taxation law. However, we are still following the intent of this law. At the November 15, 2021 Board of Education meeting, the school board estimated and announced a tentative levy for the amount of money deemed necessary. There have been no changes made to tonight's levy from the tentative amount presented. Tonight's public hearing notice was also posted on the district's website in addition to being announced at the November 15 meeting. I have received no requests for public comment related to tonight's meeting, and we received no sign-ups for public comment related to the tax levy. Tonight, we are recommending the Board of Education approve an operating levy of $299,261,148. The levy also calls for an estimated bond and interest levy of $27,599,159. This represents a total levy of $326,548,436. This levy is a request that will be reviewed by both county clerks and adjusted based on the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law, or PTEL. So while this represents a 3% increase over the 2020 levy, the tax cap legislation will adjust this down. We will not receive a 3% increase. Over the past 30 years, PTEL has limited property tax increases to the amount of CPI plus an allowance for new property in the district. This levy is set to assure the district will be able to access property tax revenues from all that new property. The Consumer Price Index used for the tax cap for this year is 1.4%. By law, this year's levy calculation uses the Consumer Price Index from the 2020 calendar year. The district will therefore receive a 1.4% increase plus any amount for new property growth. The township assessors have provided me with an estimate of the new property in the district, however, the final amount is not yet known. And based on the amount provided, we expect the total levy to increase by about 2.2% in the final extension. The estimated increase in total dollars is about $7 million, with 3.9 million coming from an increase due to the Consumer Price Index and 3.1 million coming from this estimated new property. Under the tax cap law, the Consumer Price Index has become the critical factor we look at when passing the levy, not the underlying tax rate. The rate is lowered or raised by the tax cap formula obtained when looking at the CPI amount. We expect tax rates will drop for our property taxpayers as property values have increased in both Will and DuPage Counties. We are estimating DuPage's property values have increased by approximately 2%, and Will Counties have increased by approximately 1.6%. For 2021 taxes, the average homeowner should experience a 1.4% increase in taxes paid to District 204. That's the amount of CPI, and that would represent a slight decrease in the operating rate. This levy is based on the fiscal year 2023 budget forecasts. Current projections for fiscal year 2023 suggest increases related to the Consumer Price Index across district operating funds, and we are using that to justify this estimated increase. As mentioned at the November 15 meeting, the 2021 levy year is the first year that Public Act 102-0519 will be in effect. We expect this legislation to have a very small impact on the district's property tax collections and on our taxpayers. So with that said, at this time, I am available for any questions from the board, and I do recommend the board adopt the 2021 levy later in this meeting.
Next, we move to close the public hearing. Please identify yourself as you make your motion or second. I need a motion to close the levy hearing.
Justin Carubus, I move that the Board of Education close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Would you prefer me asking the questions now or during the action items?
You can do it now.
Whatever your preference is. I'm rising, but...
So, just clarifying again, because our taxpayers saw an increase in property value and because CPI is so low, they essentially should see a slight decrease in the property tax rates, correct? That's what you said?
Correct.
Okay. And we are capped to CPI, and the reason why we usually go out to levy, and I know you know this already, is because we, according to the state, are underfunded as a district. While we've got a lot of wonderful property taxpayers, from businesses to homeowners, including all of us, we all know our property taxes are very high, but we also have the ability to recognize additional revenue, and since we are very thin as far as revenue resources, that is the reason why we go out for that. And the benefit of it this year is that, in reality, homeowners should see a decrease in tax rates. So I just wanted to clarify that.
That's all correct, Board Member Rising?
Thanks.
Any other comments? Okay, Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Carubus.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
The motion passes. All right, we have one more board salute from Ms. Jane.
Yes. The board salutes Niqua Valley graduate Trisha Brabu, who has been named a 2022 Rhodes Scholar. Trisha is a senior at Harvard University, majoring in government and tech sciences in Cambridge, Massachusetts. She will pursue a Master's of Science in Social Science of the Internet and a Master of Public Policy at Oxford. Trisha is an innovator, social entrepreneur, global advocate, and inventor of Rethink, a patented technology product that detects and stops online hate at the source. Congratulations to Trisha on this outstanding accomplishment.
All right, next up is our student representative report by Nithya Malapudi from Wobonzi Valley High School.
Good evening. My name is Nithya Malapudi and I'm a senior at Wobonzi Valley High School, as well as the IPSD Board of Education Student Representative. At WVHS, we are very thankful to be able to have everyone back in the building as we are on stepping stones to getting back to normal as soon as possible. PRISM took place this past Friday and Saturday, and we were proud to celebrate our 30th year of PRISM and are thrilled that we were back in person after last year's digital experience. Wobonzi Valley DECA is super proud to announce that there have been additional positions at the state level that our members are now taking seats at. Congratulations to Ahmed Shafik, Avi Desai, and Max Neri. They are creating history with the amount of Wobonzi Valley DECA leaders who are now on the state board. Great job, Warriors. Congratulations to each delegate and Dubby Mun on their wins at the Simon Competition, respective to each of their individual events. At the Benedictine University Mun Competition, Dubby won numerous awards again, and we are so proud of the hard work put in by our Warriors. At the Scholastic Bowl competition, T. Kelly placed seventh. Scholastic Bowl is a quiz-based competition that tests players on a wide variety of academic subjects. Congratulations. The Special Olympics basketball team has had a fantastic start to the season so far. They have won their games against Wheaton Warrenville South, Matia Valley, and most recently, Niqua. The next home match is against the Steps team on December 9 at 5:00 PM, and we hope to see you all there. Each semester, the WVHS faculty recognizes students who demonstrate the core Warrior values. Congratulations to the 50-plus students who are recognized, and thank you for the impact that you have on Wobonzi, as well as fellow students. The Wobonzi Valley Girls Basketball Team has been doing absolutely amazing so far. They have recently started their DuPage Valley Games, and we wish them the best of luck in their season. The Boys Basketball Team has also been doing phenomenal so far. Congratulations to Jackson Langendorf on being named to the All-Tournament Team in their recent Thanksgiving tournament. Also, congratulations to the new head coach, Andrew Schweitzer, on his first couple of wins. Congratulations to the freshman and sophomore boys' basketball teams on winning their Thanksgiving tournaments. We are excited to see what all this talent will bring. Wobonzi Valley hosted another blood drive, and this upcoming season of holidays and the power of giving back, our community came together to help give someone the gift of life. Some of the IPSD 204 Board of Education members attended Wobonzi Valley during their social studies classes to discuss current issues that are relevant to our student body. Thank you to Lori Donahue, Susan Demming, Natasha Grover, and Allison Fosdick for taking their time to come and chat with our students. It was quite the learning experience with all sorts of questions being asked and new information being shared. Congratulations to Soham Shah, Jason Navrajesh, Rishi Patel, Pia Shah, and Nithya Malapudi, who were selected as the five students to represent the state of Illinois as U.S. Presidential Scholar nominees in the career in technical education field. This is the first time in Dubby history that this has ever happened, that all five students who represent the state are from our school, and we can't wait to see what the future holds for all these students. Wobonzi is also very pleased to announce that there are 128 students from the graduating class of 2022 that were selected as Illinois State Scholars. They represent approximately the top 10% of graduating students with a combination of exemplary ACT or SAT scores and GPA. Congratulations to all our seniors who were selected. That is all for the IPSD School Board Report from Wobonzi Valley for the date of December 6, 2021. My name is Nithya Malapudi. It was a pleasure to speak to you all tonight. I hope everything else runs smoothly, and as always, go Warriors.
Thank you. So now, we have a great pleasure. We're going to present the outstanding athletic awards from the Matia Valley volleyball for a state champion. Please come forward as we call your name and stay up front for a photo.
I'll let you guys get settled.
Yeah. You've got to do it from there.
Oh. I can do it here. All right, you guys ready? Savannah Tan. Emma Bludgeon. Maura Falafas. Jada Wodzarek. I knew I was going to get that wrong. Nicole Amrane. Tyler Maddox. Okay. Kira Hudson. Annabelle Troy. Camille Morrison. Anna Murphy. Okay. And the coaching staff. State Coach of the Year, Dave McDonald. Gus Corlema. Megan McDonald. Cindy Herman. Darryl Honda. Andrea Kowalski. And assistant coach Jen Torza and Ron Tresman. I'm not sure we have certificates for you, but I wanted to give a shout-out to Principal Darryl Echols and Athletic Director Matt Furman. Oh, wait. Wait, I've got to get my Mustang back.
One, two, three. Got it.
And as always, go Cougars! Good luck, seniors.
Thank you. Have fun. Okay, it is now time for the public comment. 60 minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. So tonight, we have 14 speakers, so we should be able to get this done in 60 minutes. So I'll call the current speaker, and then I'll tell the name of the person who will be up next. So, and we will cut you off still at three minutes. So the first speaker is Chris Bond, and he will be followed by Arya Shreiner.
My name is Christopher Bond, and my daughter is a second-grade student at Cloud Elementary. Before I begin my comments this evening, I wanted to take a moment to commend all of the Niqua students who spoke at the last Board of Ed meeting. As a parent, it breaks my heart that they had to speak on such a tragic topic, but they all bravely did so with great care and compassion, and we, as a district, I'm sure will agree with me, are extremely proud of all of them, and we definitely thank all of them for what they had to say. You're also going to hear from another group of brave students tonight. ... save our beloved neighborhood school. But as time went on, it went so far beyond that. Our goal transitioned into minimizing the mental trauma being experienced by our children right now. We did not want to see any Cloud children or any district children have a fourth consecutive year of upheaval and uncertainty. We didn't want the Graham Falcons having to worry about losing their nest. We didn't want Biltah fearing Concept 2 would reappear and with it, the closure of their school. And we did not want to see a passionate Mission Oaks, Arrow Estates community needlessly separated from their friends and neighbors. Our children all deserve better. Not endless upheaval and constant uncertainty, but safe, loving, stable environments. That is what we have fought so hard for and will continue to fight for. Thank you, and go Cougars.
The next up is Arya Shreiner, followed by Avery Edwards.
Hello, my name is Arya Shreiner. I'm in fourth grade at Robert E. Cloud Elementary School. Please don't close my school. Here are some reasons you should not close my school. Since I'm in fourth grade, I have one more year at Cloud. If you close my school, I will not have six years of elementary at Cloud. If you close my school, some of my friends will go to other schools like Owen and Patterson. If you close my school, what will you do with Cloud and Graham? Some of the staff at Cloud will lose their jobs, also the PTA will lose their jobs. You should not close Cloud, because I will not see some of my friends ever again, also some of my teachers. You should not close Cloud, because every day I go to my new school, I will see Cloud and remember who I met and trusted. If you close Cloud, I will feel sad that I will no longer see my teachers or some of my friends. This is why you should keep Cloud open. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Avery Edwards, followed by Cheryl Barrowdale.
Good evening. My name is Avery Edwards, and I attend first grade at Graham. I am here tonight because I do not want my school or any other school to close. Graham is a great school. I have made many friends there, and my teachers are the best in the world. It is a fun place. My brother Jackson will go to Graham next fall, and people want to close my school. When we just got back from remote learning, we finally get to see our friends and teachers at school. Please don't take that away from us. Thank you for listening, and go Falcons!
Cheryl Barrowdale is next, and then followed by Mark Hanlet.
All right, well, that's a very hard speech to follow because she did an excellent job. Well done, honey. My name is Cheryl Barrow. You've seen me here week after week. I am the parent of two children at Biltah Elementary, a kindergartner and a third grader. And I think many of us are here tonight feeling cautiously optimistic, hoping that the new proposals that the Wednesday Boundary Committee meeting is going to discuss will address our entire community's strong concerns about not closing or repurposing schools. But I'm still worried, I have to say, because we haven't been told anything yet about these last-minute proposals. And I genuinely hope that they're not going to further damage our children's mental health or close any of our buildings. I've come here week after week to talk about keeping Biltah open, presenting you with numbers for the new SAWRAS subdivisions, Phases 1 and 2, bringing the mayor of Bolingbrook with me, discussing all the reasons why the only school in Bolingbrook needs to and deserves to stay open. And so have many of the other parents from Cloud and Graham. And you might wonder, why are we so doggedly coming? For me, and I suspect for some others here, it's not because I'm primarily worried about my property taxes or about how long my kids are going to ride a bus. For me, I'm concerned about the mental health impact on my children, who are struggling, and many other children who are struggling far more than many of us realize. You don't hear those stories in public comment because people hold them close to their chest, and they don't want them on the news. But that doesn't mean they aren't there. And some of us are worried sick about our kids. We don't want them to experience one more trauma, a fourth year of trauma. And to pile one more thing on top of our children, to rip them away from schools, their teachers, their safe spaces, is potentially devastating for some of them. And I think about my own children and the process so far, and all I have to say is how much are our children's mental health worth? You seem to propose its $400,000, the savings of one school, which is a drop in the bucket in a district of this side size. And I say it's wrong. It's wrong to hold our children's mental health and best interests so cheaply. I ask you to keep Biltah open and to keep all of our schools open. Value our children more than you value efficient use of space or tax dollars. We are in the middle of a pandemic and a mental health crisis. Value our children, no to closing schools or repurposing them.
The next speaker is Mark Hanlet, followed by Enno Kazabashi.
Hello, my name is Mark Hanley, and I am a sixth grader at Gregory Middle School and a Cloud alumni, and I have a sister who goes to Cloud. I am here to ask the board members not to close Robert E. Cloud Elementary School. Knowing you might not go back to your school is a very hard thing on kids. I know this because I have felt this way before. I was in fourth grade when the pandemic shut down my school. Last year, I didn't know if I would return to my school because fifth grade might end without me being able to return due to the coronavirus. I felt sad and like I had no control over my situation. Cloud felt like a home that was gone. It was a place where I felt happy, the teachers who I really cared about that I might not see again. It was a great community where everyone knows everyone really well. I am seeing my sister feel the same way, feeling like she's going to lose the community. It's really hard to watch other people feel the same way because it's the hardest thing I have ever felt. I would like the board members not to close Cloud Elementary School because I think it would be very hard on kids. Thank you for the opportunity to talk here tonight. Value our children more than you value efficient use of space or tax dollars. We are in the middle of a pandemic and a mental health crisis. Value our children no to closing schools or repurposing them.
The next speaker is Mark Hanlet, followed by Enno Kazabashi.
Hello, my name is Mark Hanley and I am a sixth grader at Gregory Middle School and a Cloud alumni, and I have a sister who goes to Cloud. I am here to ask the board members not to close Robert E. Cloud Elementary School. Knowing you might not go back to your school is a very hard thing on kids. I know this because I have felt this way before. I was in fourth grade when the pandemic shut down my school. Last year, I didn't know if I would return to my school because fifth grade might end without me being able to return due to the coronavirus. I felt sad and like I had no control over my situation. Cloud felt like a home that was gone. It was a place where I felt happy, the teachers who I really cared about that I might not see again. It was a great community where everyone knows everyone really well. I am seeing my sister feel the same way, feeling like she's going to lose the community. It's really hard to watch other people feel the same way because it's the hardest thing I have ever felt. I would like the board members not to close Cloud Elementary School because I think it would be very hard on kids. Thank you for the opportunity to talk here tonight.
Thank you very much. Speaker is Enno Kazabashi and then followed by Eileen Sadiki.
Hello, my name is Anna Kosobayashi and I'm a student at Cloud Elementary School. I want to tell you some reasons why you shouldn't close my school. Reason one, you shouldn't close Cloud because it has very good teachers. The teachers are very kind to all students and supportive. They help me when I'm stuck on something and I don't want to be separated from them. Reason two, I also don't want to be separated from friends. If I go to a different school, some of them won't go to the same school as me. It is important to me because I want to keep friendships with all of my friends. Even though some of my friends will go to the same school as me if Cloud's closed, it still won't be the same. We have fun together and we all live close to each other, so this brings me to reason three. Reason three, I love going to Cloud because it is close to my home. If I go to Spring Brook, I would have to go on the bus and that would cause too much traffic for all the kids who are going to Spring Brook if you close Cloud. This shows that Cloud is a neighborhood school and if I walk there, it would save more time and I don't have to leave my house too early and I can walk to school with my friends. Reason four, this last reason involves time. As I mentioned before, I don't have to wake up or leave for school at a certain time if I go to Cloud. If I go to Spring Brook, what happens if I wake up too late? If I wake up too late, I'll miss the bus and if I miss the bus, I'm worrying that I'll be late for school because I would have to cross a busy road. This is the ending for reason four. These are four reasons why you shouldn't close Cloud. Thank you for your time and listening to my speech.
We have Eileen Sadiki, followed by Adalina Sadiki.
Thank you, members of the board, for giving my daughter and I this opportunity to stand here today to express our continuous concerns about the closing of Naperville Schools. My name is Eileen Sadiki. My daughter, Adalina Sadiki, is a second grader at Graham Elementary School. We recently moved to Naperville during this transitional time for us. Knowing that moving here would be more costly, I justified my additional spend due to the exceptional standing and rating of elementary, middle, and high schools. It shocked us both to hear that Graham could potentially be closed next year. How could the children of family-focused city of Naperville consider taking away schools when the children are finally made more comfortable in stepping out of isolation and connecting with their teachers and classmates within their presence? I want to stress that the children are made more comfortable. They are definitely not there yet and need more time. I can go into sharing multiple statistics and studies of how the mental health has taken a severe toll on all of us, especially the children. I have additional information here to share so that you can review independently. What I want to hone in on today was the frequency of change, especially to the age group of my daughter that has taken the biggest hit in the most critical time of initiated school education and school life. At the age of five, going into her first kindergarten class and learning how to be and learn amongst her teachers and peers, introduced to stranger danger and having to conceptualize barricading their classroom door, finding the best hiding spot and keeping silent as a game or drill, having to answer questions like, Mama, am I brave enough to sit closest to the door to know what to do for my class? And then here, I am brave, Mama. I can be silent and keep us all safe from the door. To then having to go through the life-altering changes of the COVID pandemic and e-learning, additional change witnessing the fear of the unknown through their parents and the world, and fear and even coming into any contact with anyone outside of their family, spending long and countless days coming only as close as a monitor's grade for e-learning, conversing and playing games with classmates and friends their age through Zoom, to then finally feeling more safe in going back to their school, seeing friends, teachers, and making new friends. With the COVID protocols, procedures intact, and space for social distancing, seeing the joy on both the children and parents' faces on the first day of school was enough to ignite a sense of calm and surrounding support to get through yet another year of living with COVID. We are still in the process of addressing the aftermath of the impacts to the students. Children shouldn't feel scared that they will not see their parents if the bus runs late. Not one, not two, but multiple kids needed to be consoled. Children shouldn't initially look at a student who coughs or appears sick and say, stay away from me, instead of, are you okay? Time is still needed to process, adjust, and recover from the fear.
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended. Thank you, Ms. Sadiki. Listen to Eileen.
What's that?
Your daughter?
Yes, she does.
My name is Adalina Sadiki. I am a second grader at Graham. I am finally back in school and even if I have to wear a mask and keep distance, I am so happy to see my teacher and classmates every day. I know exactly where to go to get to my class, the library, the lunchroom, and the principal's office if I need help. I have made more great friends and it's been really nice having playdates again, being so close to school. I have built some great friendships with my teacher and classmates. Please don't close my school. We are just getting started and being better. I love my school and I don't want it to end. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kashik Bakaria, followed by Dylan Notts.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I am here to speak on the Boundary Committee process because I believe this entire Boundary Committee fiasco that the board has been doing for the last several months entirely reeks of elitism. Why did IPSD Board think that soliciting committee member nominations via email was best option? Did they think that even for eating a pizza, my kid is like sent a paper slip at home? Even for nominating yourself as a board member, you are sent paper nominations? Why does IPSD Board think that everybody would be checking their emails and responding to that in weeks' time and allow them to be self-nominated for their committee membership? Why does IPSD and RSP think that closing schools is the best way to tackle this falling enrollment that they have been observing instead of thinking of alternative ways that could have been better for the students and for the district? Why does RSP think that keeping a clean feeder system process is better than preserving neighborhood student safety, mental health, and student opportunities? Why does RSP favor elite new constructions by Pulteg Group, be it Ashoot Park, Magna Farms, Sawgrass, and does not even think a bit about displacing existing and breaking apart existing neighborhoods? Why does RSP so intently want to place all the rich neighborhoods in the nearby school, read Tallgrass here, but not care about the middle-income families in Crosswinds, Mission Oaks, Arrow Estates, or Cloe and Graham for that matter as well, on where they end up? Why does IPSD not care about recording public comments and acting on them in spite of telling the parents for last several months that they will provide an opportunity to talk and that changes in rules? And then they keep changing their rules on the fly again and start talking about taking a Google feedback form online as a recorded public feedback? Has a notification been sent out for this new process to all the district families either via a school PTA or via direct letter? Why did RSP and the administration only parrot a canned Q&amp;A during the three days of the Boundary Committee sessions and not answer meaningfully any of the questions that were submitted diligently on the paper form that was provided? Why has not a single IPSD Board member or then administrator answered directly to any of the questions and instead just continued to keep this monologue either by parents screaming for help and reasoning or by the administrators not presenting any meaningful concept change and addressing people's concern for the last several months? Does Mr. H. Not H. in marble or Mr. H. Only in jello really believe that entire Boundary Committee process is going to help the students in a positive way? Before making a decision to close schools, did RSP study the impact on the kids and the hardships that would be faced by the parents are the kids commuting to much farther schools? What I believe should have been done in all of this is, at the start of the Boundary Process, IPSD should have reached out to the each school PTA committees, requested them to table a proposal and
Ms. Donahue, speaker's time has ended. Thank you very much. Thank you. Dylan Notts is the next speaker, followed by Alicia Smith.
Hello, I'm Dylan Notts and I'm a junior from Niqua Valley High School. And I know there's been a lot of talk about mental health and I'm gonna continue on that but take a different perspective on things since I know one of the biggest issues facing students today is mental health issues. The biggest reason for why students have anxiety today is because expectations of others on students are very high and can be unrealistic. For one thing, there are 24 hours in a day. For seven of those hours, I'm sitting in a classroom and another eight, I'm asleep. That leaves nine hours left in the day. I have athletics for two of those hours and most days I work a part-time job for about four hours. This leaves me with only three hours left in the day, three hours to eat dinner, spend time with family, and do homework. In reality, I'm spending more like four to six hours on homework and 15 minutes with my family and I'm getting about five to six hours of sleep. We are told to get eight to nine hours of sleep, however, and we are told to spend time with family and friends so we are not too stressed out. However, since I have so much homework, I had to stop the things that gave me happiness and a sense of pride, like hanging out with family and friends, and decreasing the amount of hours that I work, which I find lots of enjoyment in. This is not just my schedule, but this is the same thing for many other students and maybe worse for some who have more than just one activity. We're also aware that this is a highly competitive school district and we can't afford to fall behind. This means that when we are sick, we can't afford to take a sick day because we will be behind for more like a week instead of just one day. This horrific schedule results in a decrease in mental health, which can cause students to feel hopeless and potentially lead to thoughts of self-harm due to a lack of motivation. Now, we need to ask ourselves, is this the time for us to control our expectations and encourage students to focus on a balance between their mental and their education? Right now, I do not feel like a 16-year-old high school student because my stress level makes me feel like an adult with a full-time job, which is nowhere near how I want to live my childhood. But I can't control that with the amount of homework that is given to me and the amount of guilt that I feel when I miss an assignment because some teachers believe that when I don't complete a homework assignment, I just don't care, which couldn't be further from the truth. Before you think I'm just another kid trying to get out of doing more homework, I want you all to know that spending too much time on homework can leave students to have a lack of interest and motivation for school. Too much time can be very unhealthy because it stresses students out and could lead to complete burnout and exhaustion. I can completely relate to this due to the late nights that I've had doing studies. So my final say is that too much homework can cause students to experience stress, anxiety, depression, and can even cause lower grades and test scores due to a lack of sleep. I'm not proposing no homework, just less homework to help us lead a more balanced and productive life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alicia Smith is next, followed by Seth Andres.
Good evening, members of the school board and the 204 community. I am here to speak about the Boundary Concept Maps and how they accelerate inequities and systemic racism in our district. I am referring to the numbers that were given out at the November Boundary Committee meeting. Three out of the four 204 elementary schools that have the highest percentages of Black and Brown students from marginalized communities, Georgetown, Gomber, McCarty, will receive an increase in their numbers of low-income students. Two of those elementary schools, Gomber and McCarty, are already tied for the third highest low-income percentages in the district, yet they will receive an increase in their numbers of low-income students. One of those elementary schools, Georgetown Elementary School, already has three times the district average of low-income student percentage, and yet neither of the Boundary Concept Maps does anything but maintain the inequitable status quo. Two of the 204 middle schools who have the highest percentages of Black and Brown students from marginalized communities, Stell and Fisher, are also slated to have increases in their low-income student numbers. Wabansee Valley High School currently has the most low-income students out of the three high schools percentage-wise, and they are receiving more low-income students, a disproportionate amount more than the other two high schools. The feeder of McCarty, Fisher, and Wabansee has the highest increase of low-income students for each level, elementary, middle school, and high school. The school board said that they were going to promote equity and that it was a priority for the Boundary discussions and committees, but there is not a thing equitable about these numbers. Thank you.
The next speaker is Seth Andres, followed by Peru Hamanani.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and the Board of Education. My name is Seth Andres and I'm from Mission Oaks. And I'd like to thank you for the public Boundary Comment Form on the district website. If you had a chance to view the comments, whether it was a short, one-line answer or sometimes they look like a life story, district-wide, there's overwhelming amount of support for Concept Three and overwhelming opposition to Concept One. I look forward to hearing how the public comments will be involved and help shape the concepts at the Boundary Process on the eighth. As you have heard from the other speakers, the children here today representing their schools and the views on the Boundary Process are a solid indication of how vested the families are in the district and how important their neighborhood schools are to them. Finally, as a member of Mission Oaks community, I agree with the majority of the district and support Concept Three and oppose closing schools and Concept One. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Peru Hamanani, followed by Abigail Sotter.
Good evening, board. My name is Peru Hamanani and I'm here to talk about the Boundary exercise, this needle exercise we are doing in the middle of the pandemic when we are still under the stress of life and death. 200 people dying every day. Do we, do our parents and 200 people are dying every day? Do we, do our parents and students deserve to die? This is happening every day and parents are like, people are dying every week. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Do you want me to call? Abigail Sotter is the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Abby and I am in third grade at Cloud Elementary. I have a brother and sister at Cloud too. They are in second grade and kindergarten. Me and my friends at Cloud love our teachers and our school. Our teachers help us learn a lot. It has been hard to learn during COVID, but my school is helping me. I would be sad and upset if I had to go to another school. Cloud is the best school I know. I'm the only kid in my family who has known a normal year at Cloud. It is important to me, my family, my friends, and teachers to keep Cloud open. Please think about the kids who go to school when you make the choices. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public speaking, public comments portion of the agenda. Next, we move to our consent agenda items and superintendent report. Start with the superintendent report.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education and the Indian Prairie Community. We are planning to expand the Test to Stay program to all of our high schools. We have had the program in place at all of our elementary and middle schools. As of Friday of last week, we had 92 students who benefited from the program. As of Friday of last week, we had 92 students who benefited from the program. That means we have saved approximately 1,200 student days of instruction for the students, because they have not had to be quarantined. Remember, the program works for those students who are masked. Students who are exposed to a positive case in school can now stay in school by being tested on the first, third, fifth, and seventh day after exposures and remain negative throughout the testing period. Our nurses are doing the testing, so that adds to their work that they have to do, and I'm very pleased that they have taken on that extra task. So the high school program will start the week of the 14th of December. Information will be sent out regarding a parent academy we have on December 16th that will be focused on helping our parents know about resources that will help them as they try to support their children with mental health issues. We will have Indian Prairie School District staff and community therapists who will be available to answer questions. The event will be a Zoom meeting. We've held one last year dealing with stress, and so we look forward to being able to have this one this year. More information will come out about how to link up to the Zoom meeting. We will be conducting parent and community training and mental health first aid later this month with a focus on our high schools' parents. Information was shared with high schools and our PTA presidents, and that information was sent out to parents for them to sign up for the training. I know that we have parents signed up from all of our high schools so far. Training consists of two hours of self-paced training, followed by six hours of direct instruction by an instructor. Mental Health First Aid is a national program where any person, regardless of their background, learns to understand and respond to signs of mental illness and substance use disorders in our youth. This parent-community training falls within our overall plans to bring Mental Health First Aid to the district. We started training our staff members several months ago, and will continue to do so during this school year and in next summer. We have 13 staff members who went through about a 40-hour training to become instructors, and so that is why we're able to expand this throughout our, our school system, and it is something that we will be doing over the next several years to build capacity within our community, meaning our parents, and also our staff, in being able to know what to do if someone's having a mental health issue. The parent-community training happens this summer, that, that, that will be happening now for our high school parents. However, more opportunities for training will take place for other parents as well, who are not high school parents. I will now turn it back over to Ms. Donahue.
Thank you. So we now move to our consent agenda items. I need a motion for the approval of Consent Agenda Items D through K.
I move that we, for the approval of Consent Agenda Items D through K.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and a second to approve the 2021 tax levy.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2021 tax levy as presented.
Is there a second?
Justin Carubis, second.
Any more discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
Good job, man.
The motion passes. Okay, our next action item. I now need a motion and a second to approve the 2022-2023 school calendar.
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2022-2023 school calendar as presented.
Supna Jane, second.
And we have Mr. Brad Hillman here to discuss the school calendar.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Tally. In accordance with Board Policy 620, tonight you are asked to approve the calendar for the 2022-2023 school calendar. Prior to presenting you with a calendar to approve, the District 204 Calendar Committee, comprised of IPA members and central office administrators, meant to discuss the best options, taking into consideration the guiding ideals and feedback from a variety of stakeholders. Once the committee had developed two options for consideration, the Board of Education provides feedback to the calendar committee, and if we will make changes if necessary. And the staff of District 204 are then surveyed on the calendar options that they would most prefer. The results are then used to make the recommendation. Based on the results of the survey, the administration is recommending that the Board of Education approve a modified calendar option A. If approved by the Board, the first day for teachers would be August 15th, and the first day for students would be August 18th. The last scheduled day for students would be June 2nd, and for teachers would be June 5th. As noted, this is a modified version of the calendar option A. The modification consists of extending spring break by two days. Due to our schools being used as polling places, we would be closed on Tuesday following spring break. This would have meant that students returned to school on Monday, were off on Tuesday, returned to school on Wednesday and Thursday, followed by a day of no school on Friday. By extending spring break to have students returning on Wednesday, we avoid the awkward return to school and only need to add a day of attendance onto the end of the calendar and option A, due to Tuesday being off in both calendars. With regards to the Friday being a day of no school, on Friday we return from spring break. That Friday is Good Friday in many of the Christian calendars. Good Friday is a day off due to a large number of staff who will put in for a religious leave day, and substitute coverage would be overwhelmed. At this time, I would be happy to entertain any questions the Board may have, and then ask the Board to take action to determine the calendar for the 22-23 school year.
Any discussion or questions?
Just have a question. And I apologize that I recognized this before, but those two days in April, that, that Wednesday that they come back from spring break and the Thursday that they're in school, I mean, are we concerned those parents are just going to leave for two weeks somewhere? You know, because there's only two days that they're going to be in school that week after coming right off of spring break. That's just a little concerning for me.
That was a concern that we had discussed after the fact. I think that having Monday as a day of school with Tuesday being a day off, I'm not certain that that would have been a better choice either.
Yeah, I'm not sure there's any way around it. I'm not sure I expected you to have an answer either. Okay, thanks.
You know, the only, I didn't have a question, but I, Mr. Hillman, I love the fact that the stakeholder inclusion was pretty, was, was extensive. Can you just share the stakeholder, just briefly share, who, who sat in on the, that original decision to bring that, the option, please?
So what we looked at was, we presented two options, option A and option B, to the teachers. The vote was taken, and shortly after that vote, I presented the calendar process to IPPC, and during that time, received feedback from the IPPC group about their suggestions with calendar option A and calendar option B, and whether or not returning for one day of school would be something that they, as parents, would be happy about. And the response was simply that they would not.
One thing I wanted to share is, I, I see that on the calendar, especially for the first quarter, parent-teacher conferences are always after the quarter ends, and it's happened in previous calendars, but I, I want to share that parents can contact their teachers prior to that. They don't have to wait for the conferences, because I know sometimes that parents don't know that. And so if we can let the parents know that, hey, and sometimes they don't even get the slots for conferences, because it's very limited. So parents should contact their teachers whenever they have a concern or want to talk to the teacher.
That is correct. Waiting until parent-teacher conferences, when you see a concern for your child, would be not something that I would do, nor would I recommend. I would recommend that if you see something, that you definitely contact your teacher to be able to work through the situation.
A quick question. First of all, Mr. Hillman, I now look at calendars in a whole new way after hearing you speak about what goes into this. I have a whole new appreciation with calendars. Could you speak to why Good Friday is taken off and not other religious holidays?
So the school district, and many times people don't think of us as employers. We are thought of as simply an education agency for, for, for students, right? Which is our primary purpose, but we do that when we employ staff. When we, I believe it was three years ago, put forward a con, a calendar that did have Good Friday as a day of attendance, we ended up having to come back to this particular Board of Education and ask them to amend the calendar, because we were running, we could not, we could not foresee being able to staff enough subs to cover the number of teachers who were putting out for a religious exemption day. So therefore, we had to make a change at the last minute, add a day of no school, and then change the end of the school calendar to adopt that. So because we are an employer, and this is something that affects us from an employment standpoint, that is why we have this day off, not because we value this day as a collective entity any more than we value any other day.
Any other questions or discussion? Jeannie, please take the roll.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye. The motion passes. Okay, lastly, we have an approval of a hearing officer for suspension or appeal. I need a motion and a second.
I move that the Board approve the hearing officer for suspension appeal.
Have a second?
Second.
Do I say her name? Ms. Latonya Harris as the hearing officer?
Do you want to say what the role is?
We have been requested by a parent to appeal their child's suspension, and so pursuant to our policy, the Board has to appoint someone to be the hearing officer. We have appointed a person who has no connection to this case. Ms. Harris is the principal of Wheatonlin Academy, and so we will follow the process of the appeal, and with Ms. Harris providing a report, a summary to the Board.
Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye. The motion passes. Next item is our discussion item. We have Dr. Tally. Steven Fuji from Batel for Kids will be presenting about the strategic plan for the district.
As Mr. Fuji is getting settled, I will provide a little bit of an introduction to Ms. Donahue, members of the Board, and the community. Tonight, we'll have a presentation about the strategic plan process that the school system will go through starting in late January. Though Indian Prairie does have a, does not have a specific strategic plan, it doesn't mean that the district has not been strategic in the work it has done in the past. It has been. From the work that the Board of Education has done to provide additional staffing in our Title I schools, to the work it has done about its equity statement, to the work that has been done to increase access to accelerated learning, all examples of the strategic work that the school system has done. The work, though, that we will embark on now, however, allows us to codify our strategic ideas into a plan engaging with our community of parents, our community of business partners, and our community of, of political partners, and think forward for the next five years to determine what is important for our students and our district. Our plan, when, when finished, will provide us with the path forward and more opportunity with the action plans that we have, will be able to review on a yearly basis to determine what we need to change in order to meet our goals. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Steven Fuji, Senior Director, Design and Delivery for Batel for Kids, the agency that will help us with crafting our strategic plan. Batel for Kids helped us a few years ago with our Portrait of a Graduate work. Though they were not selected because they did that work, it was great that they were eventually selected, because I felt it was important that we retain the work of our Portrait of a Graduate as we craft our strategic plan. Good work was done then, and I felt it's important that we retain that good work going forward. So now, Mr. Fuji will share with you and the community the process for our strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Tally. Madam President, Mr. Vice President, distinguished members of the Board, it's an honor for me to be able to be here this evening. And let me say upfront, I'm very glad I didn't follow several of the young students who spoke to you so passionately and so eloquently. They did a fantastic job. I feel as though some of the ideas exhibited by those students were actually embodied, if you will, through your Portrait of a Graduate, specifically their adaptability, their creativity, critical thinking, resilience, and communication skills. Clearly, the citizenship that is being developed in this district is strong. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here. As Dr. Tally mentioned, my name is Steven Fuji. I'm a Senior Director with Batel for Kids, and I'm honored to have had some initial conversations with Dr. Tally and the team on the strategic planning process. A little bit about me, as we will be spending the next several months together. It'll actually be a small team. We'll have a senior graphic designer. We have a project manager who has a black belt in Lean Six Sigma. Interestingly, Erica also has a black belt in karate, so she, she's a great project manager, because she makes sure that everything stays kind of consistent and that I stay on my task for deliverables to you. The other thing I might share a little bit about is, is my background, so that you might feel comfort with the expertise that we hope to bring into the space. I was a commissioned U.S. military officer before entering education. I entered education kind of as a second career. Believe it or not, there was a time in my life where the military was too large. Entering education, or exiting the military, I entered education, taught middle school, high school, became an administrator in middle school and high school, before eventually becoming a superintendent of a city school district in the state of Ohio. Since leaving the superintendency, I joined Batel for Kids. That also permitted me an opportunity to run for and become an elected Board Member myself to the Board of Education. So from one Board Member to you, let me say also, thank you. Thank you for your leadership during this extraordinary time. Thank you for the seats that you sit in. Thank you for all of the work that it takes, not only to understand a calendar, quite honestly, but to get to know students and expectations. While I waited this evening, I sat outside in your lobby or in Arthex area and had an opportunity to sit next to a couple of high school students who unfortunately just left, and was really kind of amazed at the types of conversations that they were having relative to the decisions you all were making. Really, very impressive and grateful for the opportunity. Tonight, Dr. Tally has given me a few moments to be able to share with you a couple of items, provide a brief overview for what the strategic planning process is, as we, and I love the quote, Dr. Tally, "think forward," and that lends itself then to the annual goals that you might hold the district accountable to. In addition to the process, we also want to have a good conversation around engagement and make sure that your desire for levels of engagement are considered. First, for the overview, if you were on the Board, when one of my colleagues, Dr. Mike Nicholson, engaged in the Portrait of a Graduate process, where the organization, the same organization, if you will, we have now actually acquired P21, which is an organization out of Washington, DC, and we have a organization called EdLeader 21, which is our national network of folks kind of doing this very important work. Our mission is very similar to yours. It's really about realizing the power and promise of 21st century education. And we believe that our norms fit directly with yours in terms of the desire to lead, excuse, excuse me, lead a new vision. This is entirely too close. I apologize to the listeners especially. As you have identified a vision, I believe, two and a half years ago now, in your Portrait of a Graduate, we know that there are many downstream impacts of that. As it comes to life and you have the opportunity to engage in your Portrait of a Graduate, the conversation around what happens next is really that of strategy. Certainly, no decisions you have been making have been by happenstance or Certainly, no decisions you have been making have been by happenstance or without a strategic intent. The fact of the matter is that you've had a very strategic intent with every decision you've made, but what has that overall umbrella been? And I think that is the work that Dr. Tally intends to lead in this next five-year vision. Because all of that then delves into this realm of implementation. What does it look like? Who is involved? And how does that structure kind of come to life, if you will, not only for your staff but for your students? Most importantly, for your students. Again, what we saw here this evening, we would hope to see every student be able to find that voice and be able to elevate their advocacy in a space where they're passionate. When we talk about learning for students and the power and promise of deeper learning for all students, we really talk about this intentional integration between deep, rigorous academic content and the skills necessary that your staff has been working directly with. I heard conversations about 40 hours of training for teachers. Teachers are doing yeoman's work in this moment. If you remember back 22 months ago, they were considered essential workers, and they were lauded for much of the efforts that they put forth with our students early on. Now, as we sit as board members, we see what the impact of that really kind of has had, not only on our students but also our staff. How do we intentionally elevate the work that they've done in rigorous academic content and allow that to coalesce with the desired skills, mindsets, and habits of mind that your community has said is important as it is embodied in your Portrait of a Graduate? That will be the foundation of what we'll do together in developing a strategic plan and aligning the interests of all of those folks involved. This is really an opportunity where community members, educators, workforce, and students can engage in a process to help craft this vision moving forward. While the, while the vision will be established in the roots of your Portrait of a Graduate, what does it mean to actually see those things happening in the school? How do we make decisions around those? And how does Dr. Tally support that work of educators as they move forward? Just as we did with your Portrait of a Graduate, our hope would be that we're able to engage a diverse group of stakeholders. So, again, having been a superintendent, I know sometimes strategic plans are often developed with board members and key administrators or maybe teachers. The intent here is that we would actually broaden that scope and engage community members around this work so that we have diversity at the table. It's not just administrators, it's not just educators or internal stakeholders or board members, it's really intended to be much more broad. The considerations of communities of faith, business leaders, higher education entities, community partners, parents, and, this is the part that I love the most, particularly student voice, the conversation of what high school seniors might consider for a legacy as they think about younger siblings, eighth graders who are going to engage in what this work looks like in pockets of excellence for scaling and scope across the district. As the primary consumers of this work, it's important that we elevate their voice. I've already used that phrase once, I'm sorry for that. It's important that we consider their input around these ideas as they have been the recipients of the system as it were as a whole. So the opportunity to engage with this diverse group of stakeholders really lends to a product that we hope has longevity and meaning, not just words on a paper for incremental improvement over time, something that really does lend itself to transformation and is embraced by the stakeholders. We have a proven track record or approach, and I won't go tremendously into it, as I know it's been part of your board packet, but really, the idea that I want to elevate here is that the intent is to democratize everybody's voice. It's an anonymous polling survey in face-to-face conversations, allow folks to engage around topics together, kind of develop some unique individual thought, and then place it in a, in a platform, in a manner by which, you know, the superintendent may say something, and you naturally what happens, right? Everybody kind of gravitates to, oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Or maybe, not that this would happen to you, Dr. Tally, or nah, not what Dr. Tally said. But that everybody's voice is kind of equal in this space. We want to make sure that we have that so that it's really about the ideas that get generated and the opportunity to celebrate the work that's been done. The other thing that I would say is it's not just in a platform, it's also in face-to-face engagements. Over the last 24 months, you know, one of the things that has been said has been the miss. I really, sorry, I apologize. I apologize. The opportunity to really engage face-to-face. The opportunity to, to understand where folks are coming from, to understand the passion just as we saw tonight around different topics, and to bring those ideas to fruition. So it's not just in, in a platform or not just in a digital way, but also in a face-to-face manner. Our process, which is one of the goals that I have for the evening is to really highlight for you, is one where through the preparation and envisioning, we've already spent some time with the administrative team here, talking about some dates, talking about the opportunity to engage so that we can move into this orange phase called inquire. The inquire, it's, it's as much about hard data and scores and things that will matter to you all as it is also about perceptions. What are the perceptions that we can quantify, that we can calculate, and that we can identify? That will help us as we move into a design phase with the district admin team and vetting of these ideas of priority areas. What are the major priority areas that you as a board have for the superintendent in the direction of this district? What are the major priority areas that the superintendent has? And then what are the priority areas that become evident through the perceptions that we, we under, unearth so that we can launch and succeed with a, a plan? And actually, I heard Dr. Tally, not only when he said, "talk about thinking forward," but he also talked then about the annual goals that would be presented to the Board of Education based on the adoption and approval of such plan. As I shared at the very beginning, having a portrait is wonderful. Having the considerations of the opportunities and common definition or language around what the ideas are for your community around a portrait is important, but there are many things that that impacts then inherently. What are the things that leaders need to look for as they evaluate Portrait of a Graduate and deeper learning competencies? What are the types of system shifts that should occur? How do we consider decisions to be made? How do we work with educators? And how do we network together, both internally and beyond? So an interpersonal and interpersonal approach for what can happen next. It's actually a great place for me to pause. Is it okay if I ask for any board questions? I'll go into a little bit of relevant experience and thoughts about strategic planning process moving forward, but would certainly entertain any questions that you might have. I'll have a moment at the end to also do the same.
Any questions?
I've got one, just quick overarching question.
Yes, sir.
So I think our board's done a pretty good job, and, and I'll talk a little bit about that later, but every year, this board historically sets district goals for the year, and we set board goals. Now, the board goals are things for the board, right? Things we want to accomplish, but the district goals are for everything, as far as, you know, Dr. Tally and doing that work across the district. Explain to me how the strategic plan works into that, because the strategic plan obviously is a longer-term projection or, or direction that we want to go, but that shouldn't impede our preference, if you will, or maybe it will. I mean, how does that, how do those two things coalesce? I understand that there should be some process of the, the yearly district goals aligning to the strategic plan, but the district goals on a yearly basis could significantly differ from the long-term strategic plan. So, I, I just kind of wanted to get an understanding of that so I could wrap my head around it.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Vice President. I'll take a first stab, and if I, if I miss the mark or don't address, because of context reasons, your specific question, I'll certainly defer to Dr. Tally. I, I think ideally, you're not going to change as a board your ideas about what needs to happen. The district needs to be responsive to the board's desires for what needs to happen on an annual basis. The idea behind the strategic plan would be, hopefully, that we capture some of those ideas up front and can prepare for them or can embed them in the strategic plan as we're able to. Now, granted, you could have written a strategic plan five years ago that would have been worth not the paper it was written on, given a global pandemic, right? And certainly, your goals would have changed, given that. Ideally, we, we write it broad enough that it incorporates the vision that the board has, but that it also then can be broken out by, by year, by annual goal, relative to what various administrators or folks present to you for movement forward. The idea isn't that it be incremental in nature, but that it be transformative based on the Portrait of Graduate and the work that you've done. Dr. Tally, did I hit the mark?
Yes, I think you have, and I think when we think about the, the annual goals that you have given, really dovetail should be part of the strategic plan so we aren't working on two different goal sets.
So I'll, I'll go a little bit off script in a, in a secondary response to that. I was a, a tank commander for a number of years. That was my occupation in the military. And I talk about being one degree off. We want to be calibrated. In terms of that calibration, we, we don't want to miss something by a degree. So often, the board is a significant portion of that calibration, so that as we move forward, it's, it's under the direction and in the azimuth or in the lane that you would provide. Thank you.
Quick question. You had described broadening the stakeholder committee group, and one of the things that is so unique about our district is, is the diverse makeup of our district. Have you had experience with that type of a district? And do you feel like the approach is different? Or could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the opportunity to engage on that question. The answer is, as an organization, and personally, I have had the opportunity to work with various diversified districts, and maybe that will actually blend into the very next portion of where we go. The opportunity, one of the things that I love about the opportunity to engage with districts is becoming aware of the local nuances within each district. Every district has a character, has a, has a culture in and of its own, in and of itself. And quite honestly, many of the times what we want to do is uplift that organically as part of what comes out of, again, the perception squad or a lot of times the data. If you're talking about specific experiences with various districts, we do have some of them listed for you. Albemarle County, Virginia, which is the first one listed here, is an incredibly diverse district, obviously, outside of Virginia, outside of the D.C. area, was one of the largest districts in Virginia, and has had, actually, significant kind of occurrences over the last 22 months that speak a little bit to that diversity. So, to that, I can answer directly, yes. Significant experience in diverse districts. Thank you.
I have two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
You had talked about how it was not incremental but transformational, the strategic plan. How long do you foresee the strategic plan? Will it be five years or is your timetable?
Well, I think that might be two questions. I think the first question is, how long will we take for this process? I envision having a strategic plan to you as a board to approve no later than May 12th is the, is the timeline I've been given by Dr. Tally. And what the timeline is of that strategic plan is completely dependent on, on our superintendent and what he says. Sitting here tonight, I heard him directly say, "The goal is the next five years."
Five years, okay.
So, so that would be my second part of that answer.
And then, to echo what Board Member Jane was saying, slide 10, the stakeholder engagement, I think that's really important. We also have to be aware that sometimes certain people don't belong in these groups because you also have to have the time commitment to belong in, you know, some of these groups. So I think we have to make, be very purposeful in reaching out to different people whose voices can't be heard.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll let Dr. Tally speak to that one as well. I do know that my engagement with this district started well before this evening, from the standpoint of trying to be intentional about how we consider voices and what that meeting schedule should look like and the involvement of folks kind of consistently through that time period. We've, one of the things that I know we'll talk about tonight is the, the timeline moving forward, that there will be a first meeting on January 27th, and that the team, not only Dr. Tally, but his administrative team have already been thinking about who the folks are that need to be invited and who the folks are or how we go about those invitations. Dr. Tally, I don't know if you want to?
I'll add, unlike the boundary committee, which had about eight or nine meetings, the strategic plan committee will have only four. And we start in January, we end in May. Information will go out, I believe, tomorrow, and for people to sign up who want to participate in the, into, in the committee, we will have approximately 150 to 170 people will be engaged in the process, and so we will have representation from all of the schools. But information, as I said, will go out, it'll be on our website, people can sign up until about December the 19th, and then we will start informing people through a random selection of people as we go forward with this.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So as we talk about strategic planning, there's a couple of lessons learned that I think are important, and maybe Ms. Jane, this comes back to you, or maybe even Vice President Rising. The conversation around transformation and incremental, I think are maybe summed up to some degree in some of these slides. Is it something that we're doing or is it what we are doing? I, I love to read, it's one of my personal hobbies, and, and one of my favorite authors of the moment right now is Brene Brown. She talks a lot about clear is kind and there is no courage without vulnerability. I applaud Dr. Tally in the fact that we really are intending to be vulnerable in this moment and engage in this conversation because certainly, the day-to-day, we, we don't have to necessarily do this in order to think strategically, but if we want to put this district and continue the, excuse me, great work that the district is doing, then we really want this to be what we are going to do moving forward. A second lesson learned is really that conversation of aspirations versus incremental. We don't want to come at this conversation from a deficits-based discussion. Certainly, deficits need to be considered. That's part of kind of confronting the brutal facts, if you will. Now, there's a Jim Collins reference from 20 years ago. But we really want to be courageous in talking about where we are now and where we want to be. A third lesson that we've, I think organizationally maybe learned throughout time, is that we want to make better our new best. We don't want this to be something that is kind of taking setbacks. We really want to honor the successes of the past and yet challenge ourselves to move in new directions and provoke our best thinking. So to that end, when, Ms. Grover, you asked about some of the design team members, it's important to have some of those folks that ask the critical questions that we know are necessary for us to improve. It can't just be kind of pats on the back as we move forward. It has to be about what is it that we're sensing together? The ideas that we've seen over the last 22 months specifically come in, this fourth lesson learned, which is creating the sense of belonging, that, and I heard it again earlier this evening when we heard from our students, the conversation of what do we need to all consider together so that we all feel a part of this district? It's not about those folks that are able to participate in particular programs or things, but it is what we choose to do as Indian Prairie, and we have this brand standard or promise, if you will, about what we do moving forward. Now, Mr. Rising, I come directly to you about being adaptable. Certainly, anything that we write in a five-year forecast or in a five-year strategic plan is going to have to be flexible to the degree that it has to yield to the changes in the global landscape, if you will. We want it to be able to be something that drives us forward but flexible to address the needs of the board and, and the directions of, of kind of global events, if you will. Which goes along with our sixth lesson learned around the complexity of change. And maybe this is, again, where I come back to Dr. Tally and say, some might some might say this is, like, do we really want to do this now? Do we want to undertake a strategic plan in this moment in time, given everything that we've been through? And others will say, yeah, but boy, if there are some things that we've learned that has worked really well over the last 22 months, now's the time to start to consider what those things mean for us moving forward. And there is no simple, direct, from point A to point B way to do that. We have to be willing to kind of roll up our sleeves and understand what lessons we have learned over the last 22 months. This is one that we'll hold dear, and I know is a passion. The shift from me to we. I think the important thing here is to elevate every student without exception, without prejudice. The conversation of how to do this in a moment in time that is particularly difficult as board members to navigate is important for us all, as we think about the next steps for each one of our students. Another area is that of engaging and activating the workforce. As shared before, sometimes in incremental approaches, it really is about the board as the liaisons from the community and the district. It would be really important in this moment to consider also those voices from the workforce as not only they're experiencing the types of things that we are as educators, but they're looking forward into growth areas for their areas of employment. They're looking at trends. They're looking at opportunities to consider what things actually can be done and accomplished as partners of fidelity, if you will. I think finally, well, build time into the process for reflection, right? Teachers do this. I don't know what I did differently. I apologize. Teachers do this through their lesson planning. It's important that we as professionals have the opportunity to do it as well. Build in time the process and reflect, which is why the four meetings over the next five months are pretty well spaced, about a month, three to four weeks apart, so that the people, so that folks can consider what's being discussed, come back, vet the best ideas, and begin to build the plan from that point forward. Lesson 10, I won't necessarily speak on it. It might be a bit self-serving. But the project alignment, as I shared before, really is built on the foundation of your Portrait of a Graduate that was developed a number of months ago, while still considering all of the things that we've seen over the last 22 months through the workforce, through the global interactions and human interactions, specifically that of a global pandemic and our social justice issues that we have seen permeate our country. There's a couple of opportunities and conversations for success, but really, at the end of this process, the deliverable to the Board of Education will be a strategic plan and strategic planning framework. I specifically have three documents that will be due to you. The first is the current state analysis, that would be relative to after our first meeting on perceptions, a qualitative look and quantitative look at the perceptions that were shared. That would be written and shared with our superintendent. From that point forward, there comes a strategic planning framework, which would be a document that would take those perceptions and have ideas around particular areas of focus. And then that work would be done collaboratively with Dr. Tally and his team to then develop a strategic plan, which is one that you, an example of which you might see here in front of you now. Spoke to the current state analysis. Example outcomes. Goals sometimes talk about establishing a community of learners. When you really drill down into that information and you look to revise it or modernize it so that it captures the work that is truly intended through a process, a collaborative process with the administrative team. Examples of to inpredict the value of race, class, gender, special capabilities for children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. The revised and modernized statement in relationship to what you might see from other strategic plans now has some real direction, some meat for what we would want to achieve as we move forward. The ideas in this slide necessarily are just an example of sample language from plans, not that that would be a direct representation of what would happen here, but the idea that something done collaboratively and presented to the board would have resonance. That's the right word. Would have resonance. A strategic planning framework should create a bumper guard for the completion of the rest of the plan, and helps, again, here's a Jim Collins, helps keep the main thing the main thing. We've done, we've tried to engage community members virtually. This engagement will naturally be in person. The opportunity to really talk with your stakeholders. I heard Dr. Tally now mention 170 approximately community stakeholders over that five-month period between now and May, so that it yields a strategic plan that would be able to be in front of you at that May board meeting, so that the staff can then work through the summer on developing plans, and that you, Mr. Rising, and the rest of the board would be able to have considerations for annual goals in moving forward. Dr. Tally, that completes my presentation. Certainly remain open to your comments or questions from the rest of the board, sir.
I just want to add one thing, and I talked about the 150, 170 people. That will include student representation as well.
All right. Are there other questions? Good evening.
Good evening.
I thank you so much for the presentation. The, one of the things that I felt was so important with our Portrait of a Graduate was our inclusiveness of the variety of stakeholders that just weren't specifically involved in, directly in the schools, but our community, and especially our business and personnel that were incorporated outside of just the educational sphere. I had a student, a high school student, ask me a couple of weeks ago, why had we gone through such a focus on critical thinking versus just working on, you know, objective concerns? And one of the things I shared is that, because that's so much of what we've heard from the business world, is that the concerns regarding students graduating from college and not being able to provide the type of skill sets and that qualitative thought process. And so that's one of the reasons why, you know, we've focused especially in our district. The incorporation, can you share outside of some of that, what, why it's so valuable to have those other stakeholders outside of just the educational sphere to be involved in helping to implement and impact what happens on the strategic plan on an educational perspective for our district?
Thank you for that, Mrs. Deming. Yes, and I'd be happy to. Maybe two slogans kind of come to mind when processing your question. The first one is, we don't know what we don't know. Often, some of our most successful educators have been successful students themselves. And having gone through or matriculated through 13 years of public schooling, or whatever schooling, pre-K through 12, another four years for education, pursuing their master's degree and so forth, they've been excellent students and often teach in a way that they maybe learned themselves. Certainly can adapt to best practices or attempt to do other things. But the counterbalance of being able to dialogue with, have a conversation around, what are the other employment trends that are out there? What things need to be considered provides a great balance. Just like our Portrait of a Graduate, you mentioned critical thinking. I think sometimes we as educators think of the term critical thinking. Quite honestly, as a parent, I think of the term problem solving, right? These things go hand in hand. And the value of having stakeholders talk to us about the importance of thinking critically, not just around particular academic content, but how does that academic content meet the needs of something else? That it's not just about the content itself. It's about the content and the opportunity to engage with that content in a new or unique way, which then lends itself to innovation. So, long and short of it is, I think that when we are able to engage with other stakeholders, we get a different flavor. The stakeholders get a flavor of what educators are doing today, in a truly unique time in our history. And we as educators get a unique viewpoint into the world of employment in terms of what they need. Often employers will say things like, hey, I really want somebody who can come and communicate, be drug-free, and come to work every day. We can teach them the rest. That may not be the underst, and certainly that's not all employers. I'm not saying that that's a statement that's always made. But what happens is, we hear then things as educators that maybe didn't strike us in that way at first. So the opportunity to consider those things and the movement of this district forward is important to have kind of a 360 view, if you will.
Thank you for that. The thought process of the shift to we. Board Member Grover alluded to the fact that, you know, we don't always have constituents who it's really crucial to hear their voices from, and who may not feel that they are part of the we. So when we talk about, you know, bringing people, having our hundred, however many, involved, it really is, and I'm not sure how you've seen this, or what you've done before, but it really is critical for us to have a thought process of how we can include some of those that don't, that don't see themselves as being considered as part of, when decisions are made in our district, and that happens. And some of the critical, one of the things, you know, in talking about, one of the reasons it's so important for us to look at this, there are so many students and families who are, who have gotten lost during this pandemic, who whose voices haven't, you know, aren't heard, because they, for whatever reason, may not know how to make sure that they are heard, or don't feel comfortable. So, you know, whatever your background or processes that you guys have used to try and help us pull some of that out is really, really critical. And because there are people that don't feel that they can share their thought processes and be part of that we. So whatever you can bring to, you know, bring to the administration and bring to the district so that we can try and elicit some of that, it's really, it's critical. And I'd be really interested in how that can happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Deming. I will say, one of my favorite quotes from an educational source is from Peter Sengay. He talks about, "Change comes from the fringe." That often, some of the best innovations in any business happens when we're able to engage with folks who see things differently than we might ourselves see. You know, we think we're aware of the issues, and we think we're aware of the successes. And when we're able to engage folks with divergent experiences, we wind up finding our best innovations. So thank you for that. I understand that very specific call to action there.
Just to follow up to Board Member Deming's comment, and this is for Dr. Tally. Do we have a way in our, in our request to participate in this committee, something with language and possibly translators to make this more accessible to some of our families that obviously have an interest, but feel that language might be a barrier?
If, if language is a barrier, we would obviously have some translators there to support, definitely.
And actually, to Dr. Tally's credit, was one of the early conversations that we had about making sure that our invitations and any printed material went out, and we had time to consider the translation impact of that.
Mr. Carubus?
So the, one question I want to answer at the end of this, when I received the plan, is how does this help the students? The district has existed for 49 years, and we haven't had a formal plan. And I like to think we've done a pretty good job. Doesn't mean we can't do better. Doesn't mean we can't learn and improve. But I also don't want to get a product, a deliverable, that's going to sit on the shelf, so to speak, and be filled with a bunch of jargon that is not going to impact its way down to the students. So the, the end question for me is, is how does this plan, and all of its parts, and all of its participants, benefit the students? So I, I don't expect an answer now. I'm on board with engaging in the process. I appreciate your assisting us with this. But I want to make sure that we can drill down to actually benefiting the students. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Rising?
Yeah, so, first of all, back to what Ms. Deming, Ms. Grover, Ms. Jane talked about, the me to we thing. I do think that's very important. It was interesting that on that slide, you had engaged those that the current system isn't wholly working. But I also interpreted it a different way, and making the district work for, work for the collective we. Because I think too many times, people wanted to work for them and don't realize that this is a school district that works for everyone. So that was just my first comment that struck me as we were talking about that. Along the lines of what Mr. Carubus was saying, and I'm saying this a lot now. I'm the old guy on school board, and been doing this a while. And when I first got on board, the school board had 30 goals, a year. Yeah, yeah. We narrowed it down then to like 10, and then like the last eight years, we've been around, you know, five, four, and maybe a 1A, 1B. But I think we've done a pretty darn good job. I mean, we're the second-ranked K-12 district in the state, and we're in the top, you know, 50 or 60 in the country. So we're doing okay. I also wanted to point you towards what we did, and I'm sure you've seen this, Mr. Fuji, is the Engage 204 that we did in 2017 and 2018. We had 500 community members that showed up at those meetings. We had five meetings. The average was about 130 people or so. And that Engage 204 came out with some priorities they wanted us to focus on, you know, that were primarily around programs, services, facilities, maintenance, boundaries was one of them. You know, we've been shipping away at a lot of those things, and have done a pretty darn good job. And then, of course, later in 2018, we did work with your company on Portrait of a Graduate, and we also follow a model from Castle for the social-emotional learning stuff. So we've got a lot of really good things in place. But I am tentative, only from a standpoint of, I worry that a strategic plan might be a little limiting, or a little, or constrictive, as I kind of mentioned earlier. I'm glad to hear that it is more transformational, which stuck with me, what you said. So that's encouraging. But what I'm also concerned about is that this is going to get accomplished in four meetings. Four meetings is very aggressive for a plan that is a five-year plan. With the Engage 204, it took us five meetings because we had to make sure that all the people that were engaged in 204 understood the landscape, the makeup of the district, the financial situation of the district. I understand that a strategic plan is more conceptual thinking, but concepts also take money. And, and so there are things that we want to be careful of and not to overpromise ourselves of what we can accomplish as well. So again, I'm encouraged. I'm excited for it. I think that even if we can learn things and get input from our community, bring the community together, everybody be on the same page, we move forward in that direction, I think it's going to be a wonderful thing that we do. But I will, you know, be watching closely and hope for the best. And, you know, I hope that we continue to, I know with Engage 204- best. And, you know, I hope that we continue to, I know with Engage 204, we probably had 40 students involved. With the Portrait of the Graduate, I think we had, there were only 40 members, I believe, in our community, but they were all leaders and movers and shakers. They were business leaders, city people, principals, student leaders. So I hope that we are very diverse in, in the people that we have as part of this.
A couple of brief rebuttal remarks to that, Mr. Vice President. Number one, as the senior member of the board and Mr. Carabas saying that the district has been around for 49 years-
He's lived here the whole time. So I, I've just-
I'm going to say that I, I bet you haven't been on the board for 49 years.
No.
But in terms of the conversation around the five, the four meetings or five meetings, really, the, there's a significant amount of work also that goes in between those times with the administrative team in terms of writing ideas, getting draft goals, being able to present those goals and drafts to the community at large for vetting of our thinking-
Yeah.
-so that it can be understood and there can be, dare I say, holes poked or opportunity for growth, even in the drafting process. That's really the hope there, is that we get various eyes on that so that it's not just about those four meetings per se, it's about four opportunities for folks to kind of weigh in.
Well, and I, and I hope, I guess you follow the model of the Portrait of the Graduate as you do the strategic study as far as critical thinking, collaboration, because it's only eight hours. It's only eight hours to come up with a five, I mean, eight hour-
Right.
I, I'm not saying the work that your company does, administration does, the people that are involved in it, that, that are going to be the-
Vetters.
-ones that are, that are kind of, yeah, vetters and, and really collaborating to make it happen. Eight hours is a short time to make sure that there is effective buy-in from, from all, and, and there never is 100% of people that believe in 100% of things. But, yeah, so I, I, I'm sure a lot of those meetings will be collaborative work.
Yes, ma'am.
Just like I saw at Portrait of the Graduate.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Grover?
I have one question. So Mr. Rising talked about Engage 204. We had Portrait of the Graduate. We currently have the boundary committees. We reach out to stakeholders and I've been observing all the three POG boundaries and Engage 204 was in that. Each of them is run differently in the sense that there's different expectations of the stakeholders or different, the way we run it, ask what we need from the stakeholders. Since we will be asking, you know, people to volunteer and can, can you speak to what their role will be or how it would be facilitated? Because I think it may help them to see if they want to volunteer for it.
Sure. What a great, what a great question. Thank you. Largely, the role of the strategic design team committee members, the 150, 170 folks, is to bring their best thinking into the space and vet the ideas that come out. So we'll start the first meeting with our Portrait of a Graduate. We'll talk a little bit about the landscape over the last 22 months, allow participants to really, from their lens, as a student, as a community of faith leader, as a board member, to engage on what they've seen. And then we'll bring the Portrait of a Graduate out and say, let's, let's really now dial down to these six competencies that we've talked about, that our community has said are really important for us. Where are the pockets of excellence? Because we know many of these things are happening to an exceptional level. Come back to Mr. Rising's comment about where we are as a district in terms of our educational opportunities for every student. Where are the pockets of excellence for this happening? Where can we get better? Quite honestly, it's a pretty, pretty standard SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats, but from the perspective of the lens that somebody comes into the space with. Students as the consumers, teachers as the deliverer of much of this, and community members and parents to be able to engage and say, here's what we see. After that, there's a significant amount of work and I, I kind of referenced the team. The rest of my colleagues and I will sit and vet those perceptions and look to affirm or where we can't find data points of affirmation in order to create a gap analysis on that, which finds its way into this current state analysis around where are we in terms of our strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. Many of the opportunities that the design team, strategic design team members have, is to come in and give their best thoughts in that space. Our second meeting that we'll come back to, we'll provide some of the current state analysis results. We'll ask them, for transparency's sake, it, it can't be my language. It has to be the language of the team and the community to say, are we, are we in the right direction here? Is this the stuff that's hitting the head? Because we're going to take this information and create some current state, I'm sorry, we're going to create some priority areas around how to address these. There is no maybe magic in that. We know that as a, the gentleman said earlier, you know, we don't necessarily always think of ourselves as employers. Our primary goal is in the teaching and learning for students. We know that there's going to be a priority area or two around teaching and learning, opportunities for students. What do those things look like from the perspective of each one of our stakeholder groups? Then, oh, I'm sorry, and I was going to mention a couple others. We might have something around culture and climate. We might have something around organization and financial stewardship and those types of opportunities. There really isn't a ton of magic in terms of what those areas are. There is a ton of magic in terms of what we're going to do about those areas. Or whether it's Castle's work or anyone else's, what has been going on in those areas? This is a document to also kind of create, as I said, bumper rails or guardrails along this process so that you, as a board, can be aware of them. These things can be, all be bundled together under one umbrella.
Ms. Deming? Slide 10, you talked about stakeholder engagement. You talk about inclusiveness and equitable. And I mentioned just briefly that, you know, we want to make sure that we hear from voices that are not-
Yes, ma'am.
-not always heard. Board Member Carubus talked about wanting to ensure that we understand how things are going to impact students-
Yes, ma'am.
-you know, bottom line. Along with that, we have done great as a district overall. We have some places that we still need to improve and some students that are not succeeding where everyone else is. So as that plan is provided to us and we talk about impact on students, I want to make sure that we're inclusive of all students as we talk about impact. And, you know, how do we make sure that all of our students have a chance to succeed to the highest, you know, potential possible?
So as Mr. Carabas said, you know, really want to see what the impact of this is for every child. And your action point to me is to make sure that we're inclusive of every kid and some-
Regardless of where they stand, because everybody's not, our, our district is doing, you know, we, we are a very strong district. Everybody, all students in our district are, are not where we want to see them be, you know, hopefully get to. And so those, as I mentioned, you know, we have families that have not been, that, that are lost during, during this particular time. How do we make sure that we're able to be, we need to be inclusive as we talk, as we, as that deliverable is provided to us, that it is extremely inclusive of those families and students that are not in that mainstream as well?
Thank you, ma'am.
So, just a simple question. What does the strategic plan actually look like? Like I, in business, would write strategic plans and it would be a giant binder of stuff. And then the other week, I was at something with some of the leaders in a surrounding school district and they were holding up this one-page thing and they go, this is our strategic plan. It was on like two pages. So what exactly will this look like when it comes to us?
Yes, ma'am. So what exactly, I like that you think that's a simple question. What exactly it looks like? I, I would say somewhere in between. I don't think we're going to have a binder-
Okay.
-in five months, nor do I think it's going to be one page. Quite honestly, it's going to be probably a letter from the superintendent. It's most likely going to be a letter from the board about the intention behind this, because as we know, board members do change over a five-year period. And then it will be the Portrait of a Graduate and it will be design team rosters as people who have kind of contributed to this, making sure that they get their due and their recognition as part of a historical document, especially since it'll be the first in 49 years. And then what comes after that will be the plan itself. I would really hate to say that that'll be 30 pages. I would hate to say that that will be 12 pages, but it will be some sort of page number beyond that of priority areas, objectives within each priority area and strategic action steps. Often, the action steps are enunciated kind of what we're going to do, but they live in the superintendent's office in terms of board reporting and annual polls.
And I just want to say, I think the power of a strategic plan falls in those action steps.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it goes to what Mr. Rising was speaking about when he mentioned how he, he can see how a strategic plan can be too confining. And I think the power is when you review those action steps on a yearly basis and see what you need to tweak, change, modify based upon the results that you have. And I think that's what gives the strategic plan the power that we need to have going forward.
So many of the comments that my fellow board members made, I actually was completely aligned with. And it's interesting how many of us focused on the me to we.
Yes.
That was one of the notes I wrote while you were speaking. And I think both interpretations of those words are important for our board. I also caught, you was talking about early on, don't need this to act strategically. And I think that is also a theme that we brought up here many times. We're going through the boundary process and the topic has come up, like how can you pursue this when you don't have the strategic plan in place? And we have acted strategically in the past and we will continue to do so. This will be an additional guidance for us and will be, illuminate our plans and actions going forward instead of us having this in our heads and, and thoughts. So I, I welcome the work and look forward to having this delivered to us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, our next item is our ESR grant update presented by Doug Akaryus, Laura Rosenblum, Brad Hillman and Nicole Howard.
Do you want us to wait?
Yeah. Comment to yourself, yeah.
I guess I'm just pressing on here, guys. I don't see a clicker. Like when we're on Zoom. Next slide, please.
No pressure, no pressure.
He might not want any, he wants us to wait.
He waited?
Yeah. Embarrassment. So welcome. We look forward to your presentation.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Tally. This evening, I am joined by Assistant Superintendents Laura Rosenblum, Brad Hillman and Dr. Nicole Howard. And we are going to discuss some additional positions or roles that we have added because of the ESR funds that we are receiving in the district. Our presentation, we're just going to start and talk a little bit about ESR funds so that we can talk from the same common place. Then we'll talk about some of the district level positions that we've added and then some different positions that we've put in place specifically at elementary, middle and high school levels. All right. What you see on here, these are the top 10 largest unit districts in the state of Illinois. And they're in order that way. You'll see Chicago Public Schools, then Elgin 46, Rockford, Indian Prairie School District, Plainfield, District 300, which I believe is out of Algonquin, Oswego 308, Naperville 203, Bellevue 365 and Waukegan 60. You'll also see, there's three diff-, you'll see their enrollment. And then we received three different types of funding at three different time periods because of the COVID relief. The first one was called CARES 1, and that's the one we received initially. A lot of that went to support PPE supplies, some, a lot of extra nursing that we needed to put in place for contact tracing and other reasons, as well as some additional resources put in place to help us support different types of learning that we had to commit to. Then there was the ESR 2 funding, and that's currently the funding that we're budgeting for, that we have budgeted for and that we're looking at, you know, spending that amount of money before we go into ESR 3 funding. ESR 3 funding does have some different requirements with it, specifically that we would bring the ESR 3 funding to the board, how we plan to spend that money, as well as have a public hearing to receive suggestions about ESR 3 funding. And then you'll see here the total amount of funding. You will see it was very different from school district to school district. You see CPS, out of the 7 million that the state got, they got slightly under $3 billion, did I say million? Sorry, $7 billion. CPS got slightly under $3 billion at 8,000 per student. Elgin got 102 million. Rockford, very similar in size to us, 220 million. You see, we received 13 million. Plainfield, 23 million, and so on. You'll see it's very different. You also see that we received the lowest per pupil out of those top 10 districts. When Matt Shipley presented last April, he talked a little bit about this. And at that time, he showed some of our comparable districts and how even though we are an evidence-based funding Tier 2 district, that did not equate to how much money we've got per student. So I just wanted to, this is based on Title I funds and Title I funding. And the reason it was done that way is because, remember, this is federal dollars. This is coming from, you know, the United States federal government and the way that they distribute funds in which they think they can be consistent in distributing funds is using their Title I formulas, which is actually based on poverty levels. It's based on the census. You know, when we do the US Census every 10 years, it's really based off of that. And then you look at locally and moving those students forward to decide on what those poverty levels would be. Poverty levels, look at your families who are below poverty from five to, and then look at the five to 17-year-olds that are in that household. They do not have to be in the district. So the, the end of, I would say fiscal year 18, we were about 1.8 million in title funds. And we were at about 17% low income in our district. And even this year, we're at the same spot, about 17% low income in our district. And yet our title funds have gone down to about $971,000 in the district because of those formulas. The new census that was taken in 2020, I believe, starts to kick in somewhere around 2024. It takes about that long for them to analyze and get us all that data. Some interesting things there is, prior to that, we had been above 5% poverty level in our numbers, which then triggers some additional Title I funding, either targeted or education finance insensitive grants put in place. In 2019, the, the year they used the Title I funding to make the decisions on this, we actually dropped down to 4.91%, just below the 5%. And that impacted it. So- So the state distributed straightforward with the Title 1 funding. They took all the Title 1 dollars in the state, gave the district the percentage of Title 1 funding you got for that year, and then they multiplied it across the federal funding. So ours was actually a .18% multiplied by that $7 billion to calculate how we got our funding was their calculation. You'll see on this chart, let's see, seven of the school districts listed up there are actually Tier 1 in EBF. That means their highest need when we look at how the state allocates funding. Two are at Tier 2, and one is at Tier 4. And it did not play a role at all in how much money we got from the federal funding. Additionally, there was a-- there's a Tier 2 district in the state of Illinois that received zero federal funding because they didn't have enough students to qualify for Title 1. You have to have a minimum number of students in your school district as well, and so they got zero federal funding. We also have another Tier 2 district in the state that received 20-- between 20,000 to 21,000 per student. They received $84 million, and they have 4,000 students in their district, and they're also Tier 2. So that, it really did not matter. And the federal government doesn't know what each state, how they control their funds and how they're funding education in their states. They just deliver it using that Title 1 funding. So I just wanted to make sure it was clear on-- I mean, that, this is how it played out.
I'm sorry, I need to ask questions here, Doug.
Sure.
Because this just-- I can't use the words I want to use right now.
Correct.
How angry this makes me. I am in full agreement that districts that have a high level of Title 1 students or poverty students, I have no argument with that. But what they did is they punished us twice because we don't have a high level of Title 1 students. And because we're a Title 2 and not a Title 1--
Tier 2.
Or Tier 2, sorry-- we get a double checkmark against us. I mean, this-- I mean, Rockford, that's half of their yearly budget that they got in extra funds. And I'm guessing the state or the federal government isn't checking how they're using this money.
Well--
Because it was supposed to go towards--
They will be checking. I mean, we have to do a lot of work in our expenditure reports related to the grants. I will be curious, because you're supposed to spend this money by 2024. I will be curious to see how some of the districts with how much funding they received to see what, you know, that will look like. I mean, we're grateful.
Whatever the thing. The other thing that makes me mad, and please understand this is no-- this is not a knock against Naperville 203, but Naperville 203 is at 117% of adequate funding. We are at 80% of adequate funding, and they received 270-some dollars more per student than we did. I mean--
There was a uniqueness in the Title 1 allocation for the year 2019. It's-- I don't know their whole history, but that year, it was weird. In 2018, actually, we were at 5.35%, and they were down at 4.9%. For the 2019 year, they were in the census data, they were at 5.5%, and we were down at 4.91%. So they benefited in 2019 from that poverty data of what they would actually get in the federal funding. I mean, we are, and I hopefully you agree from the presentation, we're grateful for this additional money that has come into the district that we're able to support learning and support students with. I, you know, people hear all different things out there about the federal funding. I think it's important for the board to see how, you know, where-- how the federal funding we received and how that compares to other districts. Because you might hear about other districts do-- some districts are building buildings and doing different things, and so sometimes people think that we're also receiving large amounts of money. And this is a large amount of money, that $500 per student. If you think our operating expenditures is somewhere between $12,000 and $13,000 in one year, this 500 per student is actually for the entire three to four years that we can use that funding. So you even divide it by a smaller amount than that, just so you know how much more additional we have to spend during that period of time.
Oh, so it's even further divided by three?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Is there good news here?
Yes. The good news is going to be as we move on here to our next slides. I just wanted to make sure we had an understanding of the ESR funds.
Thank you for giving-- thank you for letting us see that, though. I mean, it's important. It's important for us to see, so.
All right. So one of the first positions that we added when we knew we were going to get some additional funding was a social emotional learning and wellness coordinator. This person has been critical for us already. I will say, in all three of these, excuse me, coordinator positions, you know, one of the first things we wanted to do, all three of them have come from a building, we want them to get out to the buildings, meet the buildings, assess what's going on in those buildings, and support them. So we have only been in this school year for a few months, and so a large part of it has been, you know, getting to know the other buildings across the district and what their needs are. This person, Dawn Forkner, she leads Social Emotional Learning Council and Level Committee Meetings, facilitates professional learning opportunities for building upon request as well as specific groups, elementary SEL coaches, high school mental health coordinators, elementary interventionists, family and community engagement staff, elementary student service coordinators. And this is something we envisioned, is how do we look at mental health from a district perspective, as well as all the different services that might connect to that. Also has been supporting and organizing the youth mental health first aid trainings. And with that, just, you know, in June and July of 2021, we actually had 43 staff that received training and became certified, youth mental health certified. So far, we now have 12 of our own trainers in the district who are now providing training across the district. And so we've offered three sessions so far and have 30 more staff who are now trained in this, and we have about 15 trainings that we're going to be offering from October through June 31st. This person has played a big part in that role, along with Candy Michelli, our professional learning person, to try to organize that, get all the materials ready for that. We're also going to be offering one for parents on-- the first one will be December 18th as well, so playing a big role in that. This person serves as a consultant to school teams to support staff and student mental health and wellness, reviewing all of our SEL interventions as we review our multi-tiered systems of support, assisting with-- we did apply for an SEL grant, so there was some additional funding, federal funding, that they said they're going to give special consideration to any Tier 1 and Tier 2 districts. It's for $250,000 a year for two years. We did apply for that. We hope to hear in January that we do receive that additional funding. We feel like we're a perfect candidate for that funding, and she played a huge role. It's a-- it was a long application process. She worked on it with Dr. Tara Bell, as well as Candy again on that. And then she's also assisting with building, needing mental health supports or responding to crisis situations and making sure that they have the supports that they need in place. We also have some related service providers who help with that as well. Our literacy coordinator, this is Charmaine Joyner, has facilitated literacy professional development on PDWs, which is our professional development Wednesdays, at elementary schools across the district, leading an elementary book study with reading improvement teachers using From Striving to Thriving by Stephanie Harvey, supported initial implementation of the intervention spire and sound sensible in reading improvement with staff, has worked with individual teachers, providing planning support as well as modeling, doing coaching, participate as a committee member for our new assist assessment adoption, and reviewing all reading and writing interventions as we review our multi-tiered systems of support. We know that she's going to also be doing-- one of the things when we hired this position is also looking at our identification process for our advanced coursework, or that's something that we want to review as well as how-- what that process looks for both Project Arrow as well as advanced placement courses at our middle school, looking at that. She'll-- actually, she's going to be doing that as well as our math coordinator. Our math coordinator is Jessica Bogie, and she has facilitated mathematics professional development on PDWs at elementary schools across the district, developed and facilitated Eureka training for newly hired teachers, supported initial implementation of Big Ideas Math. That's our new resource, is a resource for middle school and fifth grade math acceleration. With the lack of subs, we're being very creative with that. She's making herself available certain mornings every week so people can just jump on when she's zooming as well to ask any type of questions and provide support. Participate as a committee member of our new assessment adoption, reviewing all math interventions as we review our multi-tiered system of support, assisting with K-8 STEM integration as we're looking at how we can include more STEM across our grade levels, providing ongoing professional learning for middle school math interventionists, and organizing district math counts competition for middle schools. As I said, she'll also be looking at that process. She was a Project Arrow math teacher in our district, and so also looking at, you know, that process and how to support students for advanced coursework. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Laura Rosenblum.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all again. In addition to what Mr. Akaryus just shared, which we are definitely benefiting from at the elementary level, it's my pleasure to share with you the main investment that we made at the elementary level. We felt that reducing class size was very important, especially while we're enduring a pandemic. We also wanted to be sure that it's sustainable even after ESR funding is no longer available. So as you can see from this chart, it represents the guidelines that we used in 2019, 2020, compared to what we use this year. As you can see, we were able to reduce class sizes at kindergarten, first, and second grade. The left column for each year shows the non-title schools guidelines, and the right shows the guidelines for our Title 1 schools. On one of my visits in October at one of our schools, I happened to be in a first-grade classroom, and unprompted, a teacher came up to me, and she said, "Having 21 in a class is a dream." She said, "I had 27 last year. I've already finished all of my beginning of the year assessments. I can work with students more frequently. I can give them feedback, and I know them more personally." And she said, "There's even space to fit them all and to build community on the carpet." So--
Clarification on that?
Sure.
For instance, for second grade--
Yep.
And I'm sorry, Lori, I interrupted.
Yeah.
For second grade, it went from non-title 30 to 25, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And title from 28 to 23. I just--
Correct. Yes, you are reading that absolutely correctly. So she-- of course, that was Mrs. Guarante, one of our first-grade team leaders. She's not the only teacher with smaller class sizes. You can see on her next slide that the average class sizes over the last four years, and it highlights on this one, are non-Title 1 schools. So you can see, again, four years, but basically, our class size average ended up being around 22 at K-1 and 2. The next slide shows our Title 1 schools, and as you can see, the average class size for K-1 and 2 is between 19 and 20 students. The quote I shared from Mrs. Guarante highlighted many of the benefits we're already noticing from reduced class sizes. These include working one-on-one with students and in small groups more regularly. So if you think about guided reading or guided math, right, you're able to see those groups more often because you have less of them. Our assessments were able to be done more quickly, which means we know where our students are and can begin challenging them sooner. Teachers can better support the social and emotional needs in the classroom. As you know, many of our youngest learners were not familiar with school routines at all, so having these smaller class sizes have helped them learn those routines and be ready to learn. And it's also given staff the opportunity to support a greater number of students with high needs. We do see that impact with students having been out of school for that extended period of time. They've also found there's more time to connect with families. We know there's a finite amount of time each day, but when you divide that by a fewer number of students and families, that means you have more time to connect with them. And then finally, just even the mental health benefit to our teachers has made this valuable. We know how incredibly hardworking and dedicated they are and that they always want to do more. And as you heard from Mrs. Guarante, it is a dream to have fewer students in class. So the next steps that we're looking at, number one, is collecting academic data so we can see the impact that this is actually having on our students academically, and also to look at expanding reduced class sizes to other grade levels in the future. Next, Mr. Hillman will share with you the highlights from the middle level.
Good evening. The middle school was very fortunate to have four positions added to assist students as they transition back to full-time learning. All of the positions referenced tonight at the middle school are currently allocated for one year, which is the 21-22 school year. The first position that was added was the parent and community engagement specialist. This is a licensed position that the middle school principals and I advocated for several years ago during the initial discussions for district needs under the evidence-based funding formula that came out, and the additional resources that it provided at that time. At that time, there were other district needs that were deemed more pressing, but the middle school leadership still felt that there was a need that was not being fulfilled. What we were going to be talking about tonight is the proposal that was developed at that time and is currently being implemented. Why we wanted this position, research shows that when a student feels a connection to school beyond just attending, grades improve, discipline decreases, while attendance increases. Additionally, we know that parent engagement is a key indicator in student success. The middle schools have made various attempts to engage students beyond the school day through intramural, sports, clubs, musicals, robotics, and many more. While many students take advantage of these opportunities, there are still students who are not involved beyond the school day. In many cases, these are the same students who struggle with academics, behavior, and social-emotional concerns. In a like manner, many of the parents of our struggling students have a difficult time engaging in the school community as well. And while our schools continue to make efforts to reach these parents, relationships, timing, and sometimes mistrust seem to be a barrier that keeps these attempts from being successful. So this particular position focuses on engaging our students and parent community by growing relationships between the school and home through a more personalized approach. How do they do this? The student and parent community engagement specialist focuses on building relationships, fostering relationships within our students who are facing challenges and obstacles in their lives outside of school, providing a structured environment for students to focus when we are trying to bridge the gap between school time and the less structured after-school time, increasing communication during the school day between students, teachers, and parents, monitoring, observing, coaching student learning behaviors during the school day, using relationships with students to mentor and enhance students' ability to utilize their social-emotional skills. When does all this happen? The parent and community engagement specialist has flexible time hours to ensure ample availability after school. This position starts later in the day, 10:30, and has availability for students all the way up until about 6 o'clock. There are five staff members in these positions. One at Granger, Fisher, and Hill each have a full-time person, with Scullen and Crone sharing an individual, and Granger-- and Gregory sharing an individual. So what have they gotten accomplished this year? We have done everything from running after-school programs, working on SEL, math, English Language Arts, and science, working with exclusion families to help them get their immunizations completed, working with quarantined students and their families to be able to be successful when at home, running lunch groups, working with new families and students, hosting parent meetings for kids who have been involved in incidents of physical or verbal aggression, and putting together a series of parent education nights, collecting data from staff and using it in presentations with the staff, working with families who have students with attendance concerns and pushing in to support those students in the classroom when they attend, building relationships and providing support to targeted families who need the most support. In the end, this position has done a lot of things that when we were coming back, that we had a lot of concerns about how we were going to ensure that our students were successful and reaching out to make sure that they were coming to class. This has been a very, very welcome position at the middle school, and hopefully one that we would be able to find some support for next year. Additionally, besides this particular piece, we had academic coaches. And here, academic coaches are working with individual groups and individual and groups of students, working on executive functioning, academic performance concerns, and gap students, which I'm going to address in just a moment, what we're looking for there. But what we've done there is we've used data to identify kids who are struggling but not necessarily receiving services, and supporting teams to be able to provide those services to students so that way they can be successful. They regularly meet with teams, they look at the achievement gap, and they are actively-- They regularly meet with teams, they look at the achievement gap, and they are actively seeking to identify students for targeted support so that way they could increase their exposure to higher-level classes. They're focusing on building writing stamina for students as they work to get back into school. They're targeting the DF list students that we had talked about last year, and trying to focus on those students to make sure that they're getting the services necessary to be successful. They started stepper clubs and has led other high-interest hands-on activities with kids to foster a sense of belonging and connection to school. So again, another position that is really trying to work on engaging students on a regular basis. Then, we also have had, and this will be the next slide, instructional coaches that have been added at the middle school level. Instructional coaches partner with teachers to analyze the current reality, set goals, identify and explain teaching strategies to hit those goals, and provide support when those goals, until those goals are met. This is really looking at the best practices in developing our teachers, not from an evaluation standpoint, but truly from a teacher wanting to engage and improving their practice for no other reason than they simply want to be the best teacher that they can be, not because they're looking for a better evaluation, which I think is the perfect way that we want to promote growth for teachers. So all of our coaches attended a gym night coaching conference. They have been, teachers and groups can sign up for coaching, in which they set goals, brainstorm on how to address them. Their coach provides support and resources and coaches them through the planning of instruction. They co-teach together, they support and provide feedback. And then finally, they also give shout-outs as to what's actually happening with inside the class so that way people are, so that way other teachers want to participate in this type of, this type of learning. Finally, we added an interventionist position, which is a data review position that we've had in the district previously. This is more of an extension, and here, we're working on addressing gaps in English Language Arts and Math. Finally, one of the things I would like to point out is that we have also been able to provide a late bus or activity bus with this money. While adding positions that are meant to work with students after school and trying to increase student engagement within the building is important, the principals felt that having a way to get students home after school that was after the 3:00 hour was a must. Some students struggle to, some parents struggle to alter their work hours to make after-school involvement happen for their children. By providing this service, we have increased student attendance and increased student engagement. So thank you very much for your support with that. And now I'll turn it over to Dr. Howard for the high school.
Thank you, Mr. Hillman. At the high school level, we had a heavy focus on using our funds to support students who were struggling during that 2021 school year, to help those students get back on track and to pass this year's classes to make sure they're graduating on time. So we use that in a variety of ways, and it looks different at each of our sites, all the way from full-time equivalent case managers and academic coaches to an additional stipend added for homework club to deal with that additional need. And all three of our schools have expanded their credit recovery supports. At Wabonzi Valley, a case manager for academic support was put into place. So this teacher works directly with students on her caseload on study skills and academic habits. The caseload consists of about 50 to 60 students who are identified based on last year's data at being at risk. Currently, knock on wood, these students are doing well, they're passing their classes, and we're going to have some more concrete data at the end of the semester that we'll be able to share with you. At Niqua Valley, an academic coach was hired to work with at-risk students. This coach is working daily with students who struggle with their courses from last year and who are identified by counselors as needing additional support with organization, advocacy academics, and academic habits. So in addition to working directly with students on the caseload, and the time varies depending upon their need, this academic coach is also working with the existing interventions that are in place during the lunch, during the lunch periods and after school. And because she's not teaching a full load, she has the flexibility of movement, so she can help to monitor and track those additional students to make sure that she's checking in with them and that they're actually utilizing those lunchtime supports and those after-school supports. Because, as you know, just because a resource is available doesn't mean students are going to take advantage of them. So she's been very valuable to us. She's been working with our director of counseling, working with the assistant principals on the DF list, attending the instructional leadership teams and making reports there, and she's also been connecting students on quarantine with resources. At Matia Valley, we added a stipend position to increase supports during the homework club that runs after school twice a week. And we're going to try something a little different coming up based on current needs. So this person is also going to work with students who are receiving PM detentions because many of them also have academic difficulties. So in addition to getting some support with behavior, they'll get some support with academics. We tried to hire an additional social worker to tend to the additional mental health needs at Matia, but unfortunately, we had a late resignation and that we haven't been able to fill that vacancy. So that remains unfilled at this time. And as I mentioned in the previous slide, all the schools have added .8 FTE for increased credit recovery. It looks different at each of the schools, but what they have in common is the goal to have all of our students get back on track. And all of these supports are offered during the daytime, so students don't have to have any interference with after-school activities.
All right, and before we jump into questions, I know one of the board questions was also just about cost. So each of the coordinator positions is approximately $120,000 a year. That's salary and benefits included on those positions. The reduction in class size was approximately $1.6 million to get our class sizes that low. On both of those, the coordinators and the class size, we plan on continuing with those through the, you know, we plan on continuing with those and seeing how we can continue to make those work. We are evaluating the other positions that we've put in place to see how, what those look like as we continue moving forward, and do plan on coming back to the board when we identify what our budgeting for that tier, that ESER III looks like and how we're going to spend those funds, which would most likely include many of the things that you've seen during this presentation so that we can continue doing those things as well, some additional things. In addition, we have spent other funding also. You probably know, last year, we sent books home with kids. We provided summer learning. We're going to be doing that again this summer. So those are additional areas on top of the extra nursing that we've needed where our funding has been going so far. With that, we'll take questions.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you, guys, for the presentation. So informative and so exciting to see how, how you anticipated the needs of our students as they were coming back and how you were able to report on how these roles have met many of the needs. I think what I'm thinking about is when these funds are no longer there, and Mr. Akiris, you already spoke to the fact that there's an intention to at least keep some of these roles. I'm wondering, in also keeping the roles, how do we support these roles so that they can be even more successful in what our asks are? Because when I look at those coordinator positions, I'm like, wow, that's a lot. And so I'm wondering, what, what is the support that these coordinators have within our current structure that will allow them to succeed in those roles? So if that's the right way of phrasing it, I'm not sure.
You know, one of the great things is that we've asked them to lead things in those positions, but we do work as a team. We have a team approach to most things. Some of those team members are at the building, some are at the district office, and it's really collaborating together on how to approach it. I will say, one of the areas, and we've seen this coming for a while, I think even when I was presenting for HR, we noticed that we were struggling to find, you know, mental health positions several years ago, and that has gotten even more challenging. I do see, you know, that mental health coordinator position as a, as a, as a big position, and we could definitely use more mental health, both at our building, which we tried to add an additional social worker to one of our buildings. I think in some of our buildings, we're having to use a service, and even services are struggling to provide that. So those are all things that we're, we're trying to do and how we can continue moving forward and what else we'd build kind of around that.
And I think the other thing that I was thinking about is, I'm sure you all are doing an analysis on what the limitations are with these roles or how these roles aren't necessarily fitting how you envision. I, I didn't hear anything about that yet, and I don't know if that's too, it's premature to, to make that analysis, but that, that's also something maybe in the future I would, I would be interested in hearing about in terms of how it may not be fitting our needs. And that's all, that's all I have.
Ms. Dunning.
Mr. Hillman, you mentioned a stepper, did you say stepper club? Or did I miss?
Yes, it's a program that is meeting after-school with kids who are interested in stepping, dancing, and being able to express themselves in that way. So it's just a club that sprung up naturally based on student need.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to, the Parent and Community Engagement Specialist, you know, I, I just really appreciate that, that whole strategy because as we've already talked about a few times tonight, just everyone, all parents aren't able to have, you know, be there right, right after school or come in during the day. So it's, it's just, I mean, you know, but it's just so critical to be able to provide outreach and try to meet parents, you know, where we can because all can't do the, you know, eight to five. So, so thank you so much on that. And that's it. I'm just real pleased that we're trying to do what we can to, you know, provide support to our students across all levels. So thank you and wish we had 2,000 per student, but, but thank you for doing with what we have.
Mr. Carubis. Ms. Grover.
I just have one thing. I think this is great, what you guys are able to do with the funding. If we do get more funding, another suggestion, and I think some of the students said it at the last board meeting, if we could get more guidance counselors, because a lot of this high school students go to their guidance counselors, that would be great.
I agree with you.
I will also say, it is something that every school district is trying to have more professional school counselors. It is the difficulty in finding them that continues to be our issue, not just here, but across any school district to which you're going. But we, we want them all.
Mr. Rising.
Just one question, or it's not even a question, it's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge for administration. If you go to slide, just the one previous to this, the high school one, and first of all, thank you for all of your work. But I do want to challenge administration a little bit on this one. When I look at this, and I look at the academic supports, and there's one at Wabonzi for 10th and 11th grade, there's one at Niqua for 9th through 12th grade, and there's a homework person at Matia. I would challenge administration to maybe look at where we could utilize the resources the most, because while it may look a little lopsided, like Niqua has one for 9th through 12th, my guess is that there aren't as many academically struggling kids at Niqua as there is at Matia and Wabonzi. At Matia, I would also challenge that, that is somebody that is not just doing homework club, but someone that understands subject levels as well. Homework club really doesn't help kids out that much. You know, the kids need somebody that's a subject matter expert, and frankly, there just doesn't seem to be a lot of those. And I know they have office hours, I know they have the rooms that they can go to, but as we're looking at these things for high school, I hope we're looking at it and maximizing the resources where we do for where the kids are struggling at, at the high schools, and equally where the kids are suffering socially, emotionally. And I know that's hard to measure, but if you look at discipline issues, that should tell the story for you of where we need that social-emotional help. And unfortunately, it's unbalanced here as well. So I would just challenge you to maybe look at that as we kind of move forward. But otherwise, I'm, I'm very happy, and thank you for all the work you guys have done because I know the board really wanted to focus and, and recognize that our students were struggling socially, emotionally, and academically, and this money has been extremely well utilized across our district, so, and where we needed it for our kids. One other just comment I wanted to say and dispel a rumor, and I know I shouldn't go down this path, but I'm going to go down it anyway, and Doug, you kind of skirted around it, but I'm going to hit it straight on. For those in the community that believed that school districts were being paid to keep masks on our kids, I am sorry, but $166 per kid to force them to wear masks, that's not what this board does. None of the board members like to be wearing the masks, and we don't like our kids wearing the masks, but we have to at this point because it's a governor mandate. So we are using this money for our kids, and that is it. Thank you.
Just one comment about.
Oh, yeah, just one, one point of clarity. So at the high schools, there are quite a few social-emotional learning supports, they're just not supported by this money.
And I wasn't pointing fingers at you, Dr. Howard, please know that. You know, I know, I see no one see the work that you're doing amazingly. I just wanted to say in general, you know, but yeah.
I think it's also important for the board to know that we're not stagnant with this. So Dr. Howard, myself, Mike Purcell, we've been meeting with our high school teams as well to look at how we can we, are there increased supports we need to do for second semester? And how do we continue to support students? So we're not stagnant in that process. We're continuing to look at what are the needs and how can we support those needs in our building to support our students and their futures.
So I hate to go back to chart three, but I have, I have. I know, it's getting late, but.
Okay, I wasn't an expert in this area, and I did my best, so I'll do my best.
I know, I know, and I ask questions ahead of time.
I did speak to, I think it's Robert Wolf, the chief financial officer for ISBE on Friday. I probably spent a half hour talking to him, trying to get a clear understanding.
It's nice you got a call back from him.
I did.
I, yeah, I mean, I think that we were all thrilled when we thought we were getting $13 million until we saw this chart in the last week, and then we were like horrified. And just for my clarity, you talked about 4.9%, and then I know we have low income about 17%. What is the difference between those two percentages?
So the poverty level is decided, it takes the census information. It also calculates, and they take, they locally try to look at that, too. But essentially, what happens is they decided that in 2019, that there were 28,000 and some change, when I, sorry, I'm just trying to recall the numbers there. There was 28,000 student, five to 17-year-olds in our community, and they said that 1,300 of them, I think it was, I don't remember, 1,300 and something of them were considered to be in poverty. That's a different threshold than what we might use for low income, what the state might use for low income or free reduced lunch. It's a different, it's a census-related calculation for that. And so that's how they figure out what percent of your population is in poverty, and that's how Title I funds are then done.
They changed their own formula that they use for education funding.
This is, I'm not sure what you're saying.
You said it's going off of census data, which that's not how we currently calculate.
Title I funding?
No, that, this funding.
This funding is based off of Title I funding.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, it's based off of Title I funding, and Title I funding is based off of census data, and then it's looked at locally on how that progresses during that period of time.
So for my clarity, too, so Title I funding is associated with poverty levels versus low income?
Correct.
Okay, because, yeah, I mean, I know.
Like, so I said, like, 2018, we received 1.8-something million dollars in Title I funding.
something million dollars in Title I funding. This year, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. We have almost identical percentage of low income that year as we do this year.
And is it tied at all to the concentration in a school? Like, you know how we have Title I schools because we have to hit a certain threshold of students and they get more funding?
It doesn't change our amount of money. So, what happens is, your schools at forty percent can be considered targeted schools, okay? And if they're not at forty percent, you have to do a waiver. It doesn't change how much funding you get, though. It doesn't change that, it's just how you're targeting that funding and how you're filling out the grant with that funding. We can provide more resources if they're at the forty percent mark than if they were lower than the forty percent mark. So, there's, and there's certain things, like, we can only get the Twenty-First Century Grant for Longwood and Georgetown because they're at forty percent. If McCarty's at like thirty-nine percent, they did not, we couldn't even do a waiver for them to qualify for the Twenty-First Century Grant for that additional funding. So, you look at it as a targeted approach, but as the money goes down, you have to make some decisions about, do you keep that and fund it locally on what you're trying to do to support different schools?
But so this calculation on chart three had nothing to do with concentration at schools. It was purely how many students qualified at that poverty level in the district.
Correct.
Yeah.
The federal funding is just, and when I've talked to Robert Wolf, he said, I mean, they were directed, you give it out through your Title I formula. There wasn't, he, it didn't sound like the state had a choice to do it differently.
Yeah, so, and so I'm not going to turn down thirteen point three million. I'm very pleased that we have that, and you guys have carefully looked at how we should best spend that to support our students from both the academic and SEL perspective. And I do also agree with Ms. Dumbing. It's something that has been passionate for me is getting kids connected to the schools because I think that if they attend clubs or they're in music or whatever, they have a stronger tie to wanting to be in that school and, you know, perform or whatever. So, did we only have one bus, though, for the extracurricular type of support, or do we have more than one bus for middle school?
So each building has at least one transportation bus, and they use a satellite distribution process where they will take kids to their elementary so that way they are closer to being picked up either by families or being able to walk home. And then all students are eligible to utilize the activity bus. Students who are in athletics, students who stay for another club, students who stay to work with the Parent and Community Engagement Specialist. Any student is able to use the bus.
Well, thank you for all of your work. I know that it's challenging because we have so many different needs to pick where we want to put our our additional funding that we received, and it looks like we've been making good choices, so thank you very much. All right, our next item is legislative advocacy and a Board of Education update. I know that we all attended our conference since the last meeting and received a lot of very good programming to help us continue our path as efficient and good board members. And I believe, Ms. Grover, maybe you want to give us an update on our resolution and belief activity?
Sure, sure, so the delegate assembly didn't start off smoothly because we were trying to vote with, using our phones and technology, which wasn't working. So it took half an hour to figure that out. But after that, you know, there were, our resolution was on the consent agenda item, and nobody, I guess questioned that, which was great because then it passed a consent agenda item. So, certain bill, certain resolutions, for instance, the gun storage one was not even brought to the floor, and the reason is, what happens is, which unbeknownst to me, which was new, what happens is when I E S B Resolution Committee says, "Do not adopt", the school district who prepared the resolution needs to appeal that. And if they do not appeal it, it is not even brought to the floor. It so happened that that school district did appeal, and so they appealed, and then the presenter had five minutes to speak to their resolution, which she did. However, before we discuss it on the floor, they will take a majority vote to see if we want to discuss it. And the majority voted that they did not want to discuss it, so it was not even brought to the floor.
The majority of the committee or?
The delegate committee, yes. So, I think it was late in the day, and since we had already had that half an hour delay, they might have had something to do with it. It was resolution fifteen at the time. The other resolution, which I know a lot of people were asking about, was the the one, the safety one, which was to have the people who are in the school district to carry arms, that did not pass. And that's basically it. So, one thing I learned is, when you want your resolution to pass, definitely get it approved at the first go by I A S B because a lot of people don't want to hear the discussion, I think, especially as you get later on in the resolutions because they're just tired.
Does anyone else have any other comments on either of those topics? All right, I need a motion to adjourn in a second.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll approve, I'll in favor. All right, we're adjourned.